Welcome to the January 7th, 2016 zoning board of adjustment meeting. If any members of the audience wish to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais, please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. This time, we would like to ask that any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, please either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. All items on the zoning board of adjustment agenda are heard individually. So the, we'll start with the approval of the December 10th zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes. Any discussion on this item? Karen moves approval of the minutes, a second. Steve seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Item number two.
Thank you, good morning. Item number two is 15 VA 006, a variance request to temporarily waive the requirement to pave circulation and parking located on approximately 2.48 acres of property at 1654 Culver Street, this is known as Cougar Oil. Let me take you through some slides. You see the location of the property. Here is Campbell, to give you a sense of where this is at, or 79 Culver Street. This here is Dakota Panel. aerial view of the property. You can see the property is developed with a chemical manufacturing plant. Future land use shows it is heavy industrial district, Campbell Street is a principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. The applicant obtained a building permit for the expansion of a warehouse and an office on the property in 2014. The permit at that time identified that all parking and circulation would be paved. However, at the end of this paving season, approximately end of October of 2015, the paving had not yet been completed. And the temporary certificate of occupancy then expired. Building Services does not have the ability to issue another temporary certificate of occupancy if there are any outstanding issues on the property. So while the applicant is willing to and intends to pave the circulation and parking, at this time, it has not been completed. Thus, they've asked for this temporary variance to waive that requirement until the asphalt plants open up again in the spring. Should note that the Building Services has noted a bond in the amount of $8,000, that's incorrect on the staff report, it's actually $80,000 per the applicant, just for your consideration. And they are asking that the requirement to pave the circulation and parking be waived until the asphalt plants open, at which point it will be paved. View of the structures on the building area to be paved, I'll point out here in a moment. The existing warehouse that was approved as part of the building permit, elevations. This is a view from Culver Road looking down the driveway to the north, Dakota Panel to the east, Culver Road to the west. Look on the site now, as you can see, you know, an example of some of the areas that are paved and not paved. About half of this is paved, about half of it not. I'll look at the northern ends of the property, the circulation aisle for the trucks and the tank, you notice on the site plan. Some of the parking area for the employees. It's another circulation lane on the backside or the north side of the building. And then circulation located on the, would be the northwest corner of the building. The snow obscures it, but it is unpaved at this point. Given the applicant's submitted building permit showing that the parking and circulation will be paved, and given the time constraints that they had, staff is in support of the request to waive, temporarily waive the circulation and parking with stipulations that the surety that's being held now for the completion of that parking be retained until that is completed and kept through the end of the next paving season, which would be October 2016. And that, sorry, excuse me. That the, this temporary variance would expire at the end of the next paving season or at the completion of the required circulation paving, whichever comes first. Staff is available for questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Signa? Andy made the motion for approval. Second, by Galen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to temporarily waive the requirement. Any discussion items on the rest of the agenda? John has moved to adjourn the zoning board of adjustment meeting. Linda seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is now adjourned. We'll move on to the planning commission meeting now. Items one and two on the planning commission meeting for January 7th, 2016 are on the consent calendar and may be approved as group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision. With the exception of, I don't think we have any exceptions here. So, items one and two, any planning commissioners want to remove? Staff? Audience?
Second.
Linda made the motion to approve items one and two. Steve seconded. Any further discussion?
I think I need to abstain from two.
Motion on the floor is to approve one and two with the exception of Andy abstaining from item two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The two items carry with Andy's abstention on item two.
Item number three is a final plan development to allow a mix of residential and commercial uses. Saw this at the previous planning commission meeting and was continued to allow the applicant to come up with some, to answer some of the planning commission's questions. Located on the corner of Polda and 7th, Zone General Commercial District. It's the old Fatty McGee's or Sports Rock, three-story building. Let me take you to an elevation so we can talk about. The applicant has submitted a revised letter of intent. So on the third floor, or third story of the building, they've, the applicant is proposing to remove the office use, which was previously requested, and it would be three residential units, either condos or apartments. On the second floor, the office use remains, however, the applicant has indicated that their plan right now is to do four apartment units or condos. That the reason for leaving the office use in the request is to leave some flexibility in the uses in the building for the future. On the first floor, the restaurant use remains. Oh, sorry, on that second floor, the applicant has also stated that the church use, which is really bumping up those, the parking exception request is being removed, and so that's not part of the request anymore. First floor restaurant, and then the basement, the applicant has revised the request to allow the restaurant to have no time limitations. So with these changes in the uses, proposed uses, the parking reduction exception request is going from 187 to one to 126 to one. With the intent that it'll be apartment units on that second floor, right, you know, immediately with the, what the applicant's proposing, it would actually be 110 to one. But we're leaving the office in there to leave some flexibility of the use. So that bumps it to 126 to one. As noted in the staff report and previously, variances have been granted on this property for 106 to one. But with that, the restaurant uses were limited to opening after five. However, as we've seen, the building's vacant and the type of uses that we got in there in the past were bars, which are not great for this area, which doesn't have a lot of visibility or foot traffic during the night, and so we get a lot of issues with, when you get, put those types of uses in there. So staff is supporting the revised request to not put a time limitation on there so we can hopefully get some better tenants than what could go in there if we limit the The applicant also submitted some information where they went and looked at seeing whether there was any leased parking available in the area. A lot of the neighbors have parking that they've either also gotten a variance to reduce to their number, or they have tenants that have restricted their ability to lease out any further parking. We did, there was a meeting last night between the applicant and the neighbor to, the owner of the property to the east, and when there was some very good discussion about the parking and a lot of things that they can work on together as they move forward, building this little hub in the city that, you know, hopefully they can, they can create a symbiotic relationship and grow together. But I don't think we're going to change any of the stipulations for that. One of the other issues that's brought, that was brought up, that was the sewer capacity, and the applicant did submit a sewer report, which Public Works Department reviewed and as, accepted as being suitable, however, you know, the applicant still needs to be aware if there's failure, that's going to trigger the extension of the sewer main. And it appears that even, you know, moving forward with what the sewer report says, the applicant and the other users of that sewer line will probably still need to work together to figure out how to keep it working well. You'll notice in the stipulations of approval, they've been revised for the revision in the uses, and with the sewer report being provided, stipulation number six has been removed, although it still would be triggered by a failure of the system. With that, staff recommends that the final plan development be approved with the revised stipulations in the staff report before you. And I believe there are some speaker request forms. Staff is available. If there are any questions at this time.
Want to go quick to Jan?
Mr. Chair, I recuse myself for consideration of this matter.
Thank you. Then I do have speaker request forms. Vicki Bierman?
My name is Vicki Bierman, and I've been an owner of Victoria's Garden for 26 years, and I know I introduced myself a month ago, so I'll just reintroduce myself quickly in a quick summary. But the last 17 years of my ownership of Victoria's Garden have been at the 327th Street. And we chose this location for the reason of the current parking variance, is there was a guaranteed number of parking spots for employees and for customers. And industry studies are proven that for a flower shop success, we require easy front door access for the shopping style of our customers. After the December 10th planning meeting, I called Julie Herman because I felt like I left out a very important bit of information in my last visit with you, and that's that we are very excited to have her interested in purchasing that building because we want activity and we want that building to thrive, and we want our neighborhood to thrive as well as downtown. I admire her ambition, vision, and guts, that's for sure. We all agree this building should be preserved, and we want more successful, people-friendly business in our downtown. And we agree that Julie Herman's proposed style of business for the main floor would complement our businesses wonderfully, and we would share the same type of clientele. I do search for a balance of supporting growth and at the same time protecting what I've dedicated my life to create, which is Victoria's Garden. On November 11th, Julie Herman hosted a wonderful open house to give tours and share her vision of the Hooky Jack's building. And at the end of our visit, she stated that once she is done with this project and that the apartments and the businesses are leased, she will be on to her next project. And that just did strike a fear and concern with me because the tenants at 327th Street live in Rapid City, we've been at 327th Street, and we are still here, and we still will be here once she moves on to her next project. My business is my only investment and my source of income, and I'm responsible for my employees' wages. I feel I'm also responsible for maintaining the shopping experience that my customers are accustomed to. And I just want to make sure that this parking issue with new, the new venture across the street doesn't suffocate the current businesses at 327th Street. We had a very productive meeting, as Fletcher said yesterday, and we did talk about the possibility of employees of the building across the street from us, as well as the tenants, being requested to park at a different location other than the section of 7th Street between Apolda and Omaha. And that would free up parking for any customers, for our businesses, as well as her businesses. When Sports Rock was in that building at its prime, it was open for lunch from 11 to 2:00, and we did not have any walk-in traffic at that time. It also opened at 5:00 then for happy hour and dinner, and our business, our walk-in traffic completely stopped at that time as well. I feel like I need to give and take to, I mean, I don't own the street, but I, there's needs to be give and take, and I'm very happy to give, but I am very concerned about opening a second restaurant in the lower level that would increase the need for parking at that time and throughout the day. And so, for this reason, I request more information on what type of restaurant or what type of business would be in that lower level before I would offer my approval on the variance of the parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. I've got a request from Fred Thurston here.
Good morning. My name is Fred Thurston. I own the building at 327th Street, immediately across from the building in question. And I concur with Vicki. It may have been seen as, in the last planning commission meeting, that we were opposed to the development of the building, which we're actually not. We're very excited about the possibility of it being developed, but obviously have concerns about its ramifications to our neighborhood. The business owners met last week to discuss this and to find out where we have a compromising position. And like Vicki's indicated, the parking of staff and tenants in the condos or apartments, whatever they will be, is a primary concern, that they could be taking up most of the street parking and not allow it for either her clients or our clients. We normally have adequate parking on our site, but what we have found is that a lot of the other businesses in the neighborhood who may not do park in our lot. And the idea of towing cars away, I have found from my building on Main Street, is not a good idea, does not work, and it upsets people more than anything else. And so what we as a group came to a compromise as, is agreed to the original proposal where they would open the main floor, no specific hours, they would have unlimited number of hours. But the lower level, what we've asked is it be restricted as originally proposed to 4:00 in the afternoon. So that was kind of our compromise to work with them on that, as well as them requesting that their tenants not, and employees not park in one block area of the building. A potential bigger concern of ours is the sewer. We have hired an engineer to take a look at it and evaluate it. We've also talked to Terry Morgan, Morgan Drain, who cleaned it out on a regular basis. Doug Spurlock, who was the engineer, actually asked for us to get a continuance because he couldn't determine what the slope of that is or what the problem is. But the reality of it is, when Sports Rock was open, we had it back up into our basement three times. The solution at that time was to have Morgan Drain come out and clean it out, I think it was on a monthly basis. And in talking to Terry, he said the two solutions are, one, dig it up and make it consistent with what the city ordinances are, or two, go ahead and clean it out. He suggested that really there should be another manhole put in 75 foot from the building to be able to make, ease that cleaning out process. But he thinks that if it was cleaned out on a regular basis, that it would go ahead and handle the load of the restaurant and the apartments. So that's kind of where we're at. We would like them to open it up, we would like for the other businesses in that building to be used, but we felt that we were compromising to a level that could be acceptable to everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Got a request from Tancy Winchell.
I again introduced myself last week.
Can you do it again, just for the record?
Oh, sorry. I'm Tancy, and I have Elite Heritage Design, and I'm also in 327th Street. I am actually a new tenant. I have only been in there two months. So I am attempting to build my business. So my fear is, as the stylists that I have brought in, one of the reasons I picked the location was because I knew, after looking at several downtown locations, that my clients would have ease to get into my building and not have to walk lots of blocks to get where I needed to be. I, am one of those people that I don't shop in the downtown area very often, because if I have to drive around more than a couple times, I'm not going to go. So basically, to reiterate everything, my same concerns are, first off, I do want to see something going there, sorry. I'm excited to have someplace I could go to lunch, someplace that my clients could go. I would love to see more foot traffic, as I do have other stylists that are growing their business. But I use lots of water, as I shampoo heads and do pedicures, and the idea of the sewer backing up, if I shampoo a client, really scares me, and that I would have to limit my use. And also that my clients would have to park several blocks and not, decide not to come because of the parking problem. I guess I would love to see, you know, I guess just some stipulations as far as the people that are going to be there more long-term, the people that are in the offices or the apartments, parking elsewhere. There was discussion of us including parking elsewhere, so that would open up more parking around our building. So those are just my same concerns as everybody else reiterated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Julie Herman?
Hi, thank you for coming, inviting me back. My name is Julie Herman. And I've just got, I re-watched the video of the last commission meeting, and also with what was requested of me in the minutes. And to me, there was really four areas that I wanted to come back and bring a little bit more information on. And one of those obviously was parking, one was the sewer. I was asked to come back and talk about the schedule of construction and when it would be complete. And also, I'd like to touch on a little bit the collaboration with the surrounding neighbors. And if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to kind of, since they're sort of standalone items, if maybe we, I take questions after each one? Or would you like me just to go through and?
Usually it's easiest just to go through them all.
Okay, that's fine. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about the collaboration with the neighbors. I felt that maybe I erroneously left you at the last commission with an improper impression of what had taken place prior to that meeting. When I first met with planning and zoning, I was told that it was important that I be in touch with the neighbors and that, you know, we have a good, they have a good understanding of what was going in, of what I was proposing to put in there, and that it be a collaborative process. So prior to any requirements by the city, I put together a packet and took that to about 26 different businesses that surrounded me. And I then hosted an open house with coffee and donuts and invited people to come in, see the building. There's many parts of the building that have never been used. And to ask questions of me, tell me suggestions, concerns, whatever that might be. And I did get a very good turnout at that, including Fred and his tenants came as well, and I actually spent most of my time with them, touring them through the building. After that, there is a requirement that you send out a notice to the businesses that the city identifies, and there were six of those, which I then sent a notice to, including a packet, again inviting them to share comments. I didn't receive any comments after that. I did call the neighbors that surround me, including Fred and including the two strip malls that are next to me. And basically, they were, I mean, I think you're familiar with what Fred's concerns are, but the other ones were supportive of it and didn't take opposition to it. So then post the last commission meeting, Vicki and I did have a phone call about working together in the future. You know, obviously, we've got some great synergy between our potential clients, and so some good opportunities there. I did also, we did also have an hour and a half meeting with Fletcher and Vicki, which was really helpful for all of us, and I think it's been touched on. But there were a couple of to-do items that came out of that meeting, and one of those was that Fred and I may jointly want to go forward in the future and ask for an additional loading and unloading park, parking stall. And the other was, I think Fred is going to talk with the city about some issues that he has with his sewer line. We did agree that the parking right in front of our two buildings, that we would encourage our owners, our tenants, not to park there and leave that free for our customers. The next segment I wanted to talk about was parking. And there were a few different issues with the parking. So as has been stated before, what I came forward asking for was really as much flexibility in that building as I could have. At that time, I had a church that was very interested in renting from me, I imagine they still aren't interested. And as we talked before, the church really puts a skew to the number of parking numbers that you have. I also was trying to leave the other floors flexible to what type of tenant I had in there. As I stated last time, this building has been vacant for, I think it's almost two years, they've not been able to find tenants, they've not been able to find a buyer. So this is a high-risk building for me to take on. And so I wanted as much flexibility as I could in what tenants I could attract to that building. But in an effort to compromise on this, I have tried to reduce those numbers. I eliminated the church, and I eliminated the potential on the second, on the third church, and I eliminated the potential on the second, on the third floor of, of possibly having offices. That brought that down by seventy-some parking spaces. I'm looking for approval now of one hundred and ten. That would be apartments on both the second and third, and commercial on the first and basement. The future, if there ever was to go, offices to go back into one of those floors, would bump that up to one twenty-six. So it's one twenty-six, but what I'm going forward with now, what my plans will show when I bring those in for review, will be apartments on the third and second floor. So I hope that the commission will see that dropping that by seventy-seven parking stalls is a, is certainly a good faith effort on my part. There was a little bit of discussion before about the parking impact with, with opening up the, the hours in the basement to, you know, to make those flexible. Again, that's purely so I can attract a, a tenant to the basement of that building, which is not gonna be an easy task. It's also to eliminate, if I restrict the hours so much that their potential for income is lower, I'm gonna end up with, the only people that could succeed there would be a bar, and I don't want a bar in there, and I don't think the city does either. So that is why I revised what I was asking for last time, to leave more latitude with that basement hours of operation, so that I can get something other than a bar in there. One of the, I think, questions that came up last time is, am I able to, gonna be able to get tenants in the lofts if they don't have assigned parking? And so what I did is, I contacted Dan Sethner, who has twenty-nine apartments on St. Joe, and nine of those are luxury loft apartments. And he does not provide parking for any of them, and, including the nine loft apartments. And basically, it's because what we've talked about, when people are home on the evenings and the weekends, the parking is available. It's, and I think if you look back at the numbers that I gave you this, the first time, there's over fifty percent of the parking around my building vacant. And that's during the daytime. In the evening, it's substantially higher than that. So there, there is enough parking down there to meet people's needs. There is no problem in getting those rented. He, he, his feeling was they will all be rented before their construction is completed. And I think the other people downtown that have constructed loft apartments have had that same experience. So I think that that is a non-issue. In addition, as you know, the city is, is planning to change the zoning on that street and trying to encourage that to be general development. And that is a different type of approach to parking. As you know, in general development, there is no parking requirements, and it's just a different way. It's more of a downtown approach. It's not, it's not the approach that we think of in residential or commercial. So it is a change in the way that we think. Going back to the potential of leasing apartments, excuse me, parking stalls, I did approach the private parking stalls around there. Tom Letner, he's the one that owns the strip mall right in front of Omaha, has Verizon in there, to see if he had any interest in leasing even after hours. And he has a very restrictive lease in place with Verizon. And interestingly enough, his lease specifically states that he can't lease to churches. So his, and he monitors that parking. He has people that come in there, that leave cars, and I don't know, go somewhere else and work. So he's very, very, he monitors that quite a bit and struggles a bit with it, especially because Verizon is very particular about what happens in that parking lot. So that is not an option for me to lease parking from. I did also speak with Steve Hilton, so he's the one right next to me. And Steve, again, is short on parking to meet his requirements. So he is not able to lease me any parking. And then I looked to city parking. So as I presented in the first study, there is substantial parking surrounding me. There is a sixty, sixty-two stall leased lot across the street from me. There's a number of ten-hour parking spots that line the side of the building. And then there's the general public parking that's around there, including the parking ramp, which is one block away. When people come home from work, the parking, leased parking lot across the street will be vacant, because it's, it's not leased after four o'clock. It's more, no more than walking across the street. It's free for their use. It is most likely where they will, where they will park. I did, I did sign up to be on the list to, to get leased parking there, as well as the parking ramp. But even if I got that leased parking, I can't see my tenants paying for it when they can use the stall next to it for free. So I think the parking is there. I think the numbers are there. There's certainly plenty of vacant parking for people to use. And after hours, there's more than enough, and it's free for their use. So, let's see here. Let's see, the next item is the sewer. And the city asked that I verify, well, let me back up a minute. I want to make sure that you understand what's going on in that street, because it's an, it's a somewhat unusual, but also very common occurrence in Rapid City. There is a difference between a sewer main and a sewer service line. A sewer main is what typically runs in the street, and the city owns and operates. The sewer service line is what connects you from your building or your home to the sewer main. You own it, and you are responsible for maintaining it. In this street, there is no sewer main. There are four sewer service lines, one of which is no longer in use. So there are three that are in use. There's mine, there's Fred's, and there's the building next to mine. They all come into the street and connect into another sewer service line, a common sewer service line, that according to the city is jointly owned by the three or four landowners that are there. All of them are installed correctly, but the one that connects Fred's building happens to be the lowest. It's not that it's improperly installed, it's just the lowest of the ones that are there. So if anywhere on that line clogs up, the sewage is going to back up into the lowest point. And over the last fifteen years, I want to put this in perspective, the clogs, the, the backups that have, have occurred there, there have only been three backups in fifteen years. So I think in pers, I mean, I've had two in my house here alone in the last year. So, you know, I don't think it's a chronic issue. I think that Hooky Jacks or Fatty McGee's had huge loads that came in very concentrated times. I think there was a fair amount of grease that probably went down there. There were products put down that shouldn't have been flushed, especially in that type of short time period, and that caused the problems. That's not the situation that I will have. I'm not saying that there couldn't be a clog caused by me or either of the other two buildings, but the likelihood is much less. There are relatively inexpensive fixes for Fred's building. There's two of them. And one is to clog the floor drain, so that if it does back up, it doesn't go into their building, it'll, you know, go back up to the next highest one, which is probably mine. Or to put a check valve in, which would prevent it from falling backward. So, and those are at his option to work through on his piece of the line. And I think he is gonna pursue that with, with the city. In response to what I've been asked to do, and that is to ensure that the capacity of the sewer and the condition of the sewer is good. In that effort, I had a camera sent down the entire length of the line. And surprisingly, since it's an older line, it is in excellent condition. So that was good news for me. As well as the capacity, we hired a licensed engineer to do the calculations, as well as a sewer designer, and both of them came up with the calculation that there is adequate capacity there for the uses that I'm requesting. Let's see. And the last thing I think that you asked me about was the schedule of construction. So once, assuming that we get approval here, then the next item, the next long lead item for me is the financing. And interestingly, it takes a long time to get a commercial appraisal, appraiser available. So that will be the long lead time for me. As soon as we're able to do that, then the loan will be secured. I anticipate that'll be kind of around the first of February. And then it'll be about a six-month schedule, that all four would be complete and occupied. So about June, July, it should all be up and running, with two fingers crossed and a lot of prayers.
Thank you, Julie. Questions from the commission, for staff or for any of the speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make a comment. I wasn't involved in the, the previous discussion, but in review of it, I just wanted to comment on Ms. Herman's proposal of being a very professional level, that I think raises the bar for our future applicants. So, so thank you for the level of detail and the information that you provided. I think it was very useful.
Thank you, Andy. Any further questions or comments?
I think somebody's gotta start this conversation, I guess. I can see the dilemma for the people who have businesses downtown and the potential buyer. I can see the dilemma for us up here. I think that having that building occupied is very important, and I, I agree with that. I think anything we put in there would be great. The question for me comes down to the restaurants. It's not so much the tenants that are gonna stay there, 'cause we want tenants down, I mean, not tenants, people who live down there. I think we want people to start living down there and, and making this a vibrant city. The, the restaurant is, is a good idea, but I also know it takes parking to do that. And I think that's our struggle, is what do we do with parking downtown? And unfortunately for all of us who live here, a lot of people just wanna park right in front of wherever there, there is. I don't know if there's a potential down the road to secure parking for people, because it's a public street. I don't know that you can do that. The idea that, that you can't lease parking bothers me. I mean, if you can't lease parking for eight years or five years, whatever those, those things that you had given us, said that, that doesn't help either. I mean, if your, your restaurant is gonna be successful, it's gonna be successful in the first couple of years. And if that doesn't work, it's, it's just a constant turnover of either people trying to do a restaurant, or it doesn't I want your building to, to be successful. I want your restaurant to be successful and your business to be successful. And if parking's not there, that won't happen either. But I also don't want the other people who have tenants across the street to be shut out without parking either. And, and their businesses fail because there's too many people in the, in the street. I don't know what the solution is. I really, I really struggle with this. I, I'm just not sure exactly how I'll vote yet, but I, I, if there's a way that we could make sure that in your lease, maybe the people who work there have, are required to park a ways away, and I don't know how you do that with the lease, that would be helpful. I, I'm glad that you visited with the neighbors and you have a good relationship with them. And, and I'm hoping that something can work out for everybody. But I'm just giving my two cents at this point, and let's see if somebody else chimes in. Thank you.
John?
I'd like to just add to what Andy Skoll said earlier. Thank you very much for your presentation, addressing the questions that we had before. Several years ago, at the time Mr. Sethner was building his lofts, I was also attending twice a year Wharton School Business Seminars. One of those seminars and studies that they presented over that period of time was who lives downtown. It's very informative about developing downtowns, who lives there, had all the demographics. They studied it extensively. Interestingly enough, people do wanna park in front of the front door here in Rapid City, but as far as I can tell, it's the only place on the planet where everybody wants to park in front of the door and will not walk a block. So it, it isn't, it is a local issue, but it's not an issue that is the total business plan, I don't believe, for either the building that's being developed, or for those that exist. Victoria's, I've been buying flowers there for as long as you've been there. Sometimes I don't get to park in front of your door, but I do it because that's where I buy flowers. So I hope that everybody can succeed. As far as the development of the property, the businesses that it's likely to attract, and the fact that the neighborhood met and said, "It would be good if we do this right," I think the neighborhood will figure it out. And in that respect, and what I heard based on how I see downtown's developing, and I've had a little experience with the current plan, I'm gonna be in favor of approving this and hoping that my downtown is better because this project gets done. So I move for the motion to approve, as based by the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
John made the motion. Linda seconded. I still have some speakers up here. I'll go to Galen.
Share, I should say. My apologies. Old habit. Anyway, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of this as well. We've hashed out all options for parking. It seems like there's no other option. It really doesn't matter what we put in, in terms of a restaurant or apartments, commercial, they will always have some sort of parking requirement. And as John mentioned, the neighborhood will adjust, and they'll, they'll figure out a way to make this work for everyone. So I guess I'm glad John made the motion. I will also be in support of this.
Thank you, Galen. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think this, we've, we've seen this property or this block of property several times, and it always comes back to parking. And I think it's a really interesting place in downtown, 'cause it just happens not to be in the downtown business district, which creates the parking discussion every time. And, and to some degree, I think we need to quit thinking of the, the parking as a, as a negative. Ten years ago, we had a, a downtown that was struggling. Today, we have a thriving downtown. So maybe we need to turn the discussion into parking problem is a good thing, because we've accomplished some goals in, in creating a, a good business environment and a residential environment where people enjoy being downtown. So I think it's a good thing that we have a parking problem. So we need to maybe redirect our mindset around that. The only real option, other option for this facility is to tear the building down and make the parking lot. So we, we need to find a way to help it work, and I'll follow the support.
Thank you, Andy. Steve?
I, I kinda echo what everybody else said, too. I, I do have a couple of concerns, though, and I was involved in the previous go-arounds when we had this issue there. And we're never gonna come to an agreement in that area. It's never gonna happen. So I, I'm glad everybody got together and leased, hashed it out. Fred's always been good, good about that. And Julie, I really appreciate what you had, had said up here, and Vicki as well. It's tough sitting here, because we're looking at a group of people out there, from, from Bob to Vicki and Fred and everybody there, that are amazing people and have done a lot of good for, for Rapid City. So I, I really appreciate everything everybody's done. I, I still have a concern about the sewer, and I'm not quite sure whose responsibility this is. I mean, we understand it's only flooded three times, but when it does, it's horrible. If you have a, a small business, it makes a difference. And I'm just concerned about, you have two restaurants in there now, or that are going to be, which there was one in the past. And there's a bar that was upstairs, and it was used in a, in a shorter period of time. So my current concern for them is, and I've heard, you know, when Julie came up there and talked about some of the fixes, the onus goes back to Fred. Why is Fred the onus when everything's working fine right now? It's the person coming into that building that's causing the issue, is what I'm looking at. Why does he have to have the expense for somebody else's businesses coming in there? So that's my only concern right now. Otherwise, I'm, I'm for this, but I'd like to see some more discussion on what we're gonna do about the sewer issue. Because that seems to be the, the parking problem, there's nothing I can do about it. And we're gonna have that probably until Rapid City, you know, disappears or whatever. But the sewer issue is an issue, and I think we need to have a little more discussion on that before we approve this. Thank you.
Steve, is there, do you want some help from staff, or?
Right, I was looking for it. I don't know who's responsible.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's my understanding that this is a private sewer line. This is not public. So it would be on those that use the sewer line to repair it or replace it, as with many other private sewer lines throughout Rapid City. This is certainly in an older section of our, our city. Julie has had an engineer look at it and indicate that the capacity is there to handle the sewer from her service. And Fred has had an engineer look at it, has identified some of the issues that may need to be corrected because of some of the blockage that's occurred in the past from some of the bar uses that created that issue. When we visited about it last night, we did not have engineering staff in our meeting with the area property owners. But we did encourage them to continue visiting with public work staff to see if there was any CIP projects or items whereby the city may in time do improvements- in time do improvements along Seventh Street that would put a city main in that area whereby they would just have individual sewer lines into that main similar to new development. But for today, as this item goes forward, independent of hours of operation or actually tenants, this is an ongoing issue that they will need to work together to resolve, and we're certainly here to help them do that.
Thank you, Vicky. Steve?
From the last meeting, what I understood was at one point in time, they had to tie hooky jacks into Fred's line. Is that correct? Fred, could you?
Maybe Bob Fokes is in the audience today. Bob, could you assist us with that one?
Sorry, I wasn't listening.
Steve, if you could repeat.
Bob, you know, they talked about that private line, and it was, from my understanding, at some point in time, the hooky jacks had to tie into the line that Fred and those, where the concern is. And I'm wondering, could somebody give me a little bit of history about how all this occurred? And I'd also like to know what's going to happen? Who's going to be responsible in when this happens? If these guys get clogged up again and the smell comes in? I mean, it seems to be falling on Fred to pay for this, and I guess my concern is I don't think it should have to be. I'm for the project, but I want some clarification on what's going to happen should they have sewer issues again.
I'll let Lee talk about that first. My name's Lee Geiger. I'm the architect representing Julie on this project. In relation to what we understand about the sewer service line is that, as nearly as we can tell, it was constructed after, at some point after most, some of the buildings were already there, but it is a private line. And for those of you that have worked with public works, basically for every owner, if, as soon as it comes off the main, even though it's in the middle of the street, that service line belonged, the responsibility for that service line belongs to the owner. As an example, several years ago, we had a significant water leak in Main Street. And from my office, I could see water shooting about 25 feet in the air, suggesting great water pressure. I called the water department and said, "I think, I think you have a leak that you might want to pay attention to." And he said, "No, I think you have a leak." And $18,000 later, my leak, along with Bob's leak, and I think Jim Skol and the building that tied into that same line, $18,000 later, our leak in the middle of the street was repaired. And that's basically the same for this clay tile line. It is a four-inch line. It's in good shape. The calculations indicate that it will work based on the buildings connected to it. We have Gary Kuhl from Skyline Engineering that submitted a letter, which I think most of you have seen. In relation to the responsibility, Steve, to answer your question, basically the way it works is largely similar to the way it works for those of us connect, that connect to a city sewer line now, because this service line does in fact ultimately connect to the city sewer. So, between Fred's building, which is probably the farthest reach, and the lowest elevation, and then to Julie's, and then to the other two, albeit one is inactive, that responsibility probably ends up being a shared responsibility from the connection point, which is 80 feet into Seventh Street off of Omaha, as we understand it, to each of the buildings. Now, relative to why does it fall on Fred? Well, it doesn't really fall on Fred. The problem is it falls on Fred to the degree that it's, that it's, his is the lowest elevation. It fall, if he, which he has, he's, you've already closed the sewer floor drains, and so with that closed, the next backup location is most likely Julie's because the next connections are downhill from Julie's location. So, each of them have, each of them have that as an issue, which ultimately has to be addressed because with Fred's plugged, obviously it's not going to back up into his anymore. It's going to back up into Julie's location would be the next one. And there are a number of ways of dealing with that, but the fact of the matter is, you know, three times in 15 years is like six, ten thousandths of a chance that it's going to happen. And so, that suggests that with limited maintenance, just limited attention, it's going to perform better than most homes in Rapid City perform. And so, in that respect, the other thing that can be, that can be done is you can have, you can have reservoirs put in at the sewer connection and an alarm that goes off. So, in residential places, we've done other things where we build trays around the area where they don't have an opportunity to do that, so you can see it back up without it spreading throughout the building. A lot of simple mechanical solutions for that, and the burden falls on each individual property owner. I didn't attend the meeting, but it looks like there's a relationship and some conversations going on that that should be solvable. I would like to, I would like to address the parking issue from the standpoint of the conversation that you and I had after last month's meeting. And adding to Andy's comments, he said 10 years ago, we didn't have a parking problem. Well, actually, 10 years ago, we still had a parking problem. But the issue is it's a perceived problem. When I moved here in '74 and in '78, our, we were involved with the beginning of the restoration of the downtown Rapid City. And at that point in time, we had a parking problem. The parking problem was that nobody wanted to park downtown. And so, now we've evolved, as Andy indicates, to a place where people do want to park downtown, and it's dramatically different condition, but it is solvable. And in our conversation, which I think you agree is reasonable approach to solving part of it, my recommendation has been and will continue to be that as we look at our community, one of the things that should be addressed is the fact that we oversell, or we overlease the spaces in terms of their actual numerical capacity. I think they're leased at around 150% of their capacity, but they're still underutilized. You can drive by any of the parking lots and especially the parking structure anytime, and they're generally from 40 to 20% vacant. And so, my recommendation has been, and I'd like for the planning commission to look at this in terms of not only this property, but properties that will come before you in the future, and especially with the planning, the study that's being done. If we put parking meters, if we put some parking meters in every leased space, in every leased lot or in our structure, which we've started to do in the parking structure, we can increase the utilization of that because we can now, we can now have the opportunity for people that are looking for parking locations in their downtown area to consider the parking lots, to consider the parking structure. And the question that always comes before me when we have that come up is that, well, what happens, Lee, when you, because you have a leased space and you drive into the parking structure and all the places are taken because the meters are full and you're, and there are no leased spaces empty anymore? And my answer is, well, hallelujah. Now, we're maximizing the income off of those parking facilities, and we're gaining funds so we can build more parking structures. But the real truth of the matter is, is we're finding places for people to park. And when we get to that point where I'm upset because I have, I've driven into my place and have to park on the street instead of in the structure, I call City Hall. The meter maids are going through those lots all the time, making sure I don't park. They're illegal already. And so, what they do is they take a sack, put it over the meter, and they monitor the maximum occupancy of our parking spaces in the lots and in the structure that way, so that we can creep up to that perfect number of parking, of meters in leased lots. That will go a long ways to solving the issues.
Lee, I'm sorry to interrupt. We've gotten off track from the issue at hand.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to encourage you to attend the open house that Puma is holding and be a big part of that downtown master plan. But I'd also like to get back to the issue at hand.
But, well, the point is, I'll close with this, but the point is, because I have become somewhat sermononic about this, but the fact is that this does apply to this particular problem in this particular site, because then that allows for the customers that are going to buy flowers or have their hair done or buy antiques or go to a restaurant. It allows them to have the opportunity to park closer and pay for doing it and solve some of the burden. So, I'll lay that before you. So, at any rate, I hope I've answered the question on the sewer, Steve, and I hope that I've helped at least address the parking issue in relative to, relative to the questions before us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I continue?
Yeah, Steve.
And thanks, Lee, for bringing that up. And I'd actually like you to visit with Vicky sometime and get that on a docket so we can bring that forward to Planning Commission, because I think he's got some good ideas. But getting back to the sewer, here's my concern about the sewer, and I thank you, Lee, for bringing that information. The building over there, it was never constructed to handle that load the two restaurants have. And so, it changes while it's, you had just said it's owned personally by them. The side over there that you're now going in, you're putting two restaurants in, is putting more load in there than it's ever handled in its history, and it comes back and it's affecting the people across the street. And so, Fred, I'd like you to come up and maybe address that issue.
You might, excuse me, you might find me stumbling around a little bit. I had an accident with a table saw, and that got me on some drugs. So, I'm a little bit out of balance. The backups into my basement was not over a period of 17 years. It was only while Hooky Jack's was in operation. In a period of about a year, a year and a half, I had those three backups. And Bob and I had talked about it where Bob is, and the agreement was that they would go ahead and flush it out. The backups were below where our lines tie together. They're in the shared part of the sewer. The Terry has, can speak to this, but the products that were in that line that did the backup were specifically from their facility, and that he has agreed that should they go ahead to open, it would need, minimum need be flushed out. The backflow preventer that one talks about is, I've been told by engineers, is not a good idea, because yes, it will stop at one time, but then the repairs of opening a backup are a serious issue. And being a basement, first of all, we do not have all of our drains plugged. We're not allowed to. You can't plug all the drains in the bathrooms. You know, there are floor drains required by code, so we only have about half of them plugged. The ones that first get the sewage coming back up are plugged. We didn't have any problems before they opened. We haven't had any problems since they closed. Everything is going absolutely fine with our sewage system and has, except for the period of time that they were, the first period of time, after Bob and I came to the agreement, they flush it out, we were okay. And I think that if on a monthly basis, they continued to have it flushed out, we would probably be okay. And that's one of the things that I throw out. Also, the city had told us when this first happened that they had planned on rebuilding Seventh Street. That was, what, five years ago, something like that? Maybe eight years ago, that they were planning on rebuilding Seventh Street, and the sewer line would be completely replaced at that time. So, that hasn't happened, and that's what we were kind of looking forward to, is to get that whole sewer replaced. The other thing is that they did a calculation of what the drainage was, the slope on it, and from talking to my engineer, that the, that slope is within the building, that they could not have calculated what that slope was in the sewer from the buildings down to the Omaha main. Isn't that correct, Lee?
Yes.
Yeah. So, we don't know what the slope in the sewer is in the street itself, and that might be part of the problem. You know, we're willing to participate in solving the problem, which is not willing to let it go the way it is and have this backup again into our building. And thank you for the support of that, that problem.
Thank you, Fred. We've got a motion on the floor to approve with stipulations. Is there further discussion from the commission on that motion? Karen has a question.
Based on what Fred is talking about and Steve brought up as far as the sewer situation, is there a way that you can put in this approval that the owner of the property across the street participates in cleaning sewers or something to make it a joint effort instead of just Fred's responsibility?
Mr. Chair?
Vicky?
I think the city would be very concerned with regulating an agreement on a private line that we don't have any authority over, but I do think we need to hear from Ted Johnson to bring some clarity to the sewer issue.
Ted, you're on the spot.
All right, thank you. Mr. Geiger was very accurate in his description of the sewer, as far as I know. I did go back and check through the service cards, and I don't know that this is 100% accurate, but it's the best information we have. It appears that sewer that serves those buildings was built around 1924, '25. Was built, it's built towards the west side of the street. It serves 320, 315, 321, which I believe is the Hooky Jack's building, serves Mr. Thurston's building. I didn't find any information on Mr. Thurston's building to know where that service ties in. There's a faint line on one of the service cards that kind of indicates it angles from Mr. Thurston's building into the combined sewer between the two buildings on the west side of the street. So, I don't know exactly where that fits in there. You know, that building, that sewer's been there since the mid-'20s. I could not find anybody that helped put it in that still works for the city that could give me any information. But it is a combined, it's a non-conforming combined service that does, we have several of those in town. I don't know of any plans, immediate plans to rebuild Seventh Street or rebuild the sewer at this time. We haven't talked about that for quite a while. The city does have a program in place and recent ordinance changes that allows the city to participate in replacing or eliminating non-conforming services. It's based on a priority system, and it's the worst first. This one doesn't qualify. It's not anywhere close to the top of the priority list, because it does function, and it functioned fairly well, maintained, appears to. The information provided by the applicant's engineer basically shows that, calculations show that that sewer is big enough to handle the flows. I don't have, and they did TV it, they provided a video of it. That seems that the sewer is functioning. There's no serious defects in it that we could see, but it is an old service, and it's a really old service, has been modified a few times. It was changed from tying directly into Omaha to tying into a manhole stub that was extended from Omaha when Omaha was rebuilt. We, the city would entertain an assessed project if these, all the users would come forth with that. We will not force an assessed project on them to replace that. So, that'd be voluntary, and all the people that use it would need to participate in that. But that, I mean, that's the information I have. It's an old service. Don't know who put it, who built it, or who is responsible, or, you know, doesn't, it belongs, basically belongs to the users of it, private service, but.
Thank you, Ted.
It's been there, and it seems to be functioning.
Okay.
Fairly well.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, would like to get to the vote on this. Did I understand, Ted, that the first person on the line, according to city records, was the Hooky Jack building?
No, sir. It appears the first one that tied in was Rouse Transfer, which is 315. I believe that's the building north of Hooky Jack's. The next card I have is, was Blackill Grocery, which I think that's Hooky Jack's. It was tied in in 1925. I could not find a service card or any service cards for Mr. Thurston's building. I did find some services cards for water and such. It has some different addresses. I don't know if the addressing changed.
Okay, so, the question of- Okay, so the, the question of me first or me second is answered. Thank you very much. I'd ask that the vote be taken on the motion.
I do have one more speaker request from Steve. Do you want to discuss this?
Again, I'll go back to when it was, when it was installed, it wasn't installed as a restaurant. And it's, and when they went and they said, "We've had three in fifteen years," that wasn't correct. That was kind of using a long, we was looking for is, when is a restaurant, how many times did it clog? And that was in a year and a half. He had three. Now we're putting two restaurants in there. That's my concern, and I, I guess, I'd like to hear from Julie, because I, because Fred and I are talking, and Julie said that they're willing to work together, so I'd like to find out from Julie what she's willing to do to resolve the sewer issue. And Fred's made a recommendation. I just, I guess I'd like to hear from Julie.
Julie, would you be willing to speak to that briefly?
I might have to defer to Bob Fuchs a little bit on this, but I do believe that it is in fifteen years, because there were other businesses in there with heavy peak loads as well, so I don't think you can restrict it to the year and a half that you're referring to. Is that accurate? Or, I mean, I, you know, I didn't go to this bar. I don't know, but I've been told lots of stories about lines down the sidewalk, and the fire marshal monitoring how many, for years, prior to the clogs that we're talking about. So that's the timeframe that I'm referring to. I'm not sure what you're asking of me. I mean, the reality is, the fix to this is to put a sewer main in, right? I mean, I, I guess I could ask the question of the city. What is the city going to do? I mean, you've got three or four individual landowners who are limping along on a service line. The, I believe the city put this in as a budget line item approximately five years ago, and it's been deferred, and deferred, and deferred, because it's not a priority. It's a need. And as the city looks at changing the development here, if you're truly going to be bringing business into this street and developing this into, you know, a major part of your downtown, I mean, maybe, maybe this is part of that study. This is, I mean, I have talked to the consultants in Denver that the city is using, and that will probably be part of their recommendation, is to upgrade the sewer capacity in that line to accommodate incoming businesses.
Absent the city acting, though? I mean, absent the city acting, though, what, what would be your plans for?
My plan is what the city requires of me, and that is that I am financially responsible for my sewer service line, as is Fred, and as are the other business owners. I just had to replace the sewer service line at my house. It cost me $12,000. Yesterday, the firehouse flooded with four feet of water, and they had to take care of that. It's, it's my responsibility to take care of my building. The common line, the common sewer service line, is a joint responsibility. I'm not going to have the, to say that I'm going to have the problems that a previous business owner had, there's nothing to say that's going to occur. I might have different problems. I might have that problem. I might have no problems. So until there's a problem I need to deal with, I can't offer up what my answer, what the solution is going to be. But I will say that that is a commonly owned line. I don't own that line. I own my line, and I have to pay for that line, just as Fred does his line. And I probably need to put a sewer cap on my floor drain as well. So, I mean, the problems that Fred has experienced are not anything that the rest of us don't have to deal with as well.
Thank you. Steve, does that answer your question?
Want to talk?
Bob, keep it quick.
I'm Bob Fuchs, and I, I'm with Firehouse. And we had the building, and I think it was about eight, ten years ago when we had that flooding issue going into Fred's building. And what we did is we had Morgan Drain come out, and we had him flush the building, or flush the line and jet it a number of times. And frankly, what we found out, it was tampons. And what happened was, we had five, six hundred people in there on five, on Friday and Saturday nights when we were busy. And so that was the, the issue. So what my maintenance guys did, and I've never shared this with Fred, we would have a monthly tampon flush. And we'd open all the drains, or all the sinks, and all the, everything we could find that would flush water, and we just pushed water through that drains once a month, and it cleared it out nicely. And ever since we started doing that, we never had an issue again. So, and we did have Morgan Drain once in a while. They would go in, and they would double-check it, and make sure that it was, it was flushing. And every time they did, we never had any issue. There was nothing there. So, so that's what solved it ultimately. And that was probably ten years ago, I think, that we did that eight, ten years ago, something like that, so.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to approve per staff stipulations. Steve?
This is from last night.
Oh, here. Seeing no other lights up, I'd like to move to a vote. All those in favor of this proposal per stipulations, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Proposal is passed. We'll move on to item number four. Item number four, I'm going to have to abstain from this. I'm going to give the gavel to Karen.
Madam Chair, item number four is a preliminary subdivision plan to take a ten and a half acre parcel and create two commercial lots. This is the Shopko lot, and we put it on non-consent so that Eric could abstain. They are creating a second commercial lot at the front along Haynes Avenue for future development. They've demonstrated that what they're platting for the Shopko site will provide sufficient parking, landscaping, access. We do have some utility connection issues that will be resolved as the plat comes forward, but with that, we are recommending to approve with the stipulations as identified in the report.
Okay, thank you, Vicki. Do I have a motion, or any questions for Vicki? Okay, Steve made the motion, actually, and you seconded. Thank you. Any discussion from anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, and I'll turn the gavel.
Thank you. Item number five.
Yes, item number five is 15 RZ023, a request to rezone property from general agriculture district to heavy industrial district. Location of the property is south of Eglin Street, between East North Street and Elkvale Road, more specifically between Dias and Beale Street. Property's own general agriculture district. There is a mix of light industrial, general commercial, and some heavy industrial district that's located adjacent to the east of this property. Aerial view, as you can see, the property's currently undeveloped. Mix of light industrial uses, general commercial, then the tank farm located adjacent to the east. Future land use map of the property shows the property's appropriate for light industrial development. I should note here that the heavy industrial district is not considered to be an appropriate zoning district than the light industrial district, land use, or the light industrial land use designation. Property to the south is appropriate for urban neighborhood development, and there's some employment campus that's located to the south and east of this as well. Major street plan showing Interstate, or, I'm sorry, Mall Drive, East North Street, Elkvale Road, shown as principal arterial streets. Look of the property with the sign posted, the, this railroad right-of-way that runs along Eglin Street separates the property from the road right-of-way. Does provide an elevation difference, just as you're aware, between the Eglin Street right-of-way and the, the property. That's looking east towards Elkvale Road. This is looking west towards East North Street, Eglin, Rushmore Crossing. One more wide view of the property. When we're, when we consider the rezone, we look at several criteria, the first of which being, are there any conditions in the neighborhood which would necessitate the rezone? In this case, there are no conditions that are changing, or that are requiring that this property be rezoned. The second that we look at is, is this amendment consistent with the intent of the ordinance? And the intent of the ordinance being to provide safe, orderly, efficient development in the city that's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And in this instance, we see the letter of intent submitted by the applicants, which shows that the property could potentially be used for uses such as railroad freight terminal, railroad shop, junk and waste processing, machinery, automobile, equipment salvage, and acetylene gas manufacturing and storage. And we see that those uses are extremely high impact, and they, by definition, don't meet with the requirements of the light industrial development, which generally requires work being done in an enclosed space. The heavy industrial district, these uses are, are of a nature that they're not going to be in an enclosed space. So this wouldn't not, would not be in compliance with the intent of the ordinance. We look at the potential impacts of that development along Eglin Street, which is a high-traffic corridor that's moving people from the homestead areas in Rapid Valley towards the Rushmore Crossing commercial development. We see the Interstate 90 corridor as a major entrance corridor to the community, and the impacts of this type of heavy industrial use that could have on that area are not, or do not benefit the community, could have an adverse impact on the community. And with that, the final criteria that we look at is, is this in compliance with the requirements of the, or the development plans for the city? And in fact, it's not. The heavy industrial development, or heavy industrial uses typical, typically permitted, don't, aren't compatible with the light industrial uses, the urban neighborhood uses, the employment campus uses that we've identified as appropriate for development in this area. We want to protect, or use the ordinance and the comprehensive plan to protect our entrance corridors and our gateways to the community, to provide a warm, opening, and positive view of the community. And the heavy industrial impacts that those uses could create don't really, or they, they have a conflict with one another. So based on those reasons, the conflict with the comprehensive plan, the potential negative impacts, lack of mitigation, staff does not believe that this is the appropriate use, or the potential heavy industrial uses are appropriate for this area, and we are recommending to deny the request to rezone property from general agriculture district to heavy industrial district. We believe there are some speaker request forms for this item, and staff is available for questions at this time.
Thank you. We do have a few speaker request forums. I'll start with Peter Hendrickson.
Good morning. My name's Peter Hendrickson.
Could you identify where you live as well, just for the record?
My address is 5827 Wildwood Drive, downtown city. I'm a property owner immediately to the west and adjacent to the subject property. The current development is, in this area is general commercial in nature. There's retail shopping with Rushmore Crossing, Menards, the restaurants, hotels, car dealerships, and small retail shops. This area is also a highly visible entrance into the city of Rapid City. The petitioner is asking that this parcel be rezoned to heavy industrial for the stated purpose of processing junk, waste material, discarded materials, machinery, and automobiles. Also for manufacturing and storing acetylene gas, and a railroad freight terminal and repair shop. This would severely negatively affect the surrounding area with heavy truck traffic, dangerous materials, noise, odor, and appearance. The stated uses would also negatively affect the entrance into Rapid City. To rezone this parcel from general ag to heavy industrial would create an island of heavy industrial uses in an area currently being developed and identified on the city's future land use. Study is being general commercial and light industrial in nature. I would urge you to vote to deny this application for rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope I'm giving this right. Alan Johnson?
Can I have Bill Hubner's conference?
You bet.
He's got some, he wants the other hand. You pass these out to them?
Thank you. Very first thing we're going to put up here.
Do you want to petition or picture?
Yeah.
State your name.
Hi. My name is Bill Hubner. I'm president of Ace Steel and Recycling. I've never done this before, so bear with me. I'm sure I'll make a few mistakes. This is the area where we're talking about, right in through here. It is, so I just want to talk to you, I guess, a little bit about the arguments that the planning department is stating. The planning department states that no changes have been made in this district or area that necessitate change, and in some cases, that's true. This is a viewpoint, looking out from the property. This area has all been heavy industrial in all but the name since the 1970s. However, due to growing population and growing desire to make the decision to recycle, more materials are being developed of facilities such as Ace Steel and Recycling than any time in the history. Everywhere you go in this town, you see signs that say recycle. We pull customers in from Wyoming, from North Dakota, from Nebraska, from Rapid City, and all the surrounding areas in Rapid City. Now the city is saying, "Go ahead and recycle," but, you know, "We don't want any facilities within the city that you can do it." The planning department has stated, the very first thing they said is that no developmental plans have been submitted. They're familiar with what we're wanting to do, but we have not spent the thousands and thousands of dollars to develop the plans before we would know if we would even have a chance of putting this, getting this facility into the heavy industrial classification. The laws were put in place to allow for that. Zoning first, planning later, and that's what we're trying to do here right now. When Ace moved out to this property in 1973, prior to it being part of the city, it was projected to be industrial because of the proximity to the railroad tracks and the tank farms. And I've got another. Back in 1975, when they did their first comprehensive long-term plan out there, this was, the majority of this area was considered industrial. They didn't have a heavy industrial and a light industrial classification, but they expected most of it would be heavy industrial. And I want to go back. This right here is the plan, showing most of the area out here are heavy industrial. If you go back to this picture right here and take a look at these areas, you'll see that it's still primarily industrial applications out there. It's not a mecca of car dealerships and restaurants. All of those areas are farther off, farther away from this facility. The planning department, one of the things they're talking about is they're stating that there is going to be increased heavy truck traffic on Eglin Streets if it's approved, and it'll have the adverse effect on the view. What we're looking to do with this property is to move all of the scrap iron off this facility, move it back behind the tanks, so that we can improve the view of the people driving by the interstate. That is our primary concern here. We realize that we are not a beautiful business, but we do beautiful things. If you didn't have facilities such as Ace Steel and Recycling, you would have every yard in town, we stocked to the cupboards with old washers, old dryers, old saws, you name it. Anything that was made out of iron, if they didn't have places, facilities such as us to go to, they'd have to pack it in their backyard. One of the things that we do in this facility right now is we have to transload all of our material out to a rail site, off-site rail spur. So we have to take loaded trucks, 95,000 pound trucks, back and forth Eglin Street, all the time, through the Elkvale intersection, out to the rail site, and back, constantly, all the time we're running these trucks. If we were able to get this facility, put it If we were able to get this facility, put it in a rail spur here, those trucks would be off the road. One of the things they talk about is the gateway. And in their procedures or in their, their report, they said that they wanted, there were plenty of places down on another gateway, Highway 79 and Katron Boulevard, that would be perfect for this. Well, that area in which you're looking is directly on the gateway. The gateway is set as Highway 79 and Katron Boulevard. This gateway out here is set on Elkvale and I-90. We're two-thirds of a mile away from Elkvale. If we move to where the city thought we should move, we would be, we would be closer to one of the gateways than this facility is going to be here right now. The planning department is stating that this is a high-impact, high-use, but the traffic coming in and out of a facility is nothing compared to what would go to a Menards or even a motel. It's consistent with the truck stops, truck shops, truck sales, tank farms, trucking companies, welding and manufacturing shops located all, located on and around Eglin Street. Don't forget about the DOT shop right down the road, or the tank farms themselves. They have plenty of traffic. We're trying to eliminate truck traffic. The original, the long-term comprehensive plan that they're talking about states that the presence of the railroad, and you got to find the rest of my mind, that the presence of the railroad and the ridge upon the south side of this property would limit this use for residential, and that they and the city themselves, the planning department, states there's acceptable places for light industrial along Elkvale, running all up and down Elkvale. So, there's plenty of room out there for additional light industrial place, but very few that fit in with what this area has been since the early 70s. As I've said before, this site is two-thirds of a mile away from Elkvale. It's a mile away from the closest residential area. And when they talk about gateways, don't forget, there's not just one gateway. We have a gateway to Rapid City at Elkvale, we have one on West Boulevard, we have one on Highway 79. Not everybody that goes to Rapid City is going to travel by this property. The city should be trying to route traffic through all the other additional gateways so that they can, so they can keep the traffic flowing within there. To come, come here and say that this is the only place that's ever going to get traffic is totally wrong. They talk about, at one point, they talk about the residential area that's going to come in there. And I'll, I'll get to some of this a little bit farther down the road. But it's going to be almost impossible for this property to be seen by any residential areas that may or may not be built in the future, and I'll get to why that is. Oh, of course, they say that while, the city is always stating that they want to move all of the heavy industrial sites to one area. They want to take everything else and move it to less impactful areas. Concentrate everything down on Highway 79. And as, as an industrial business owner and knowing a lot of industrials, I'm really surprised that the goal of the planning department is to basically run all of the industrial processes out of town. And we've been here for years and years. We provide steady employment. Some of the highest-paying, blue-collar jobs around are in industries such as us. We serve a vital part of our community. City also mentioned one of the parts was the infrastructure. You know, they mentioned that it was served by the city sewer, but they didn't talk about how they would, that they would have, would have to do some problems. We have sewer right there. We would have to build less than 10-foot of sewer to service this property. They showed you the pictures at first. I want to show you what the area really looks like. Al and I, Johnson Bar Five, we went out on this property and took these pictures yesterday. This is from the center of this property looking out north to the interstate. That's the view you get right there. If you go higher up elevation, if you go higher up elevation, that's the view you get, industrial. If you face to the north on this property, that's the view you get, a huge hill. If you faced the west on the property, that's the view you get, another hill. If you view to the east, that's the view you get. And if you go all the way up on top of the hill, which nothing would be, that's the view you get. This is not a island of heavy industrial. This is in an industrial area. Irregardless or regardless of what the city says, this has always been an industrial area. One of the things that they talk about, of course, is, according to the city guidelines for heavy industrial, they talk that it is typically located in areas with direct access to major transportation, major transportation routes, rail and roadway. One of the reasons that this was designed or planned to be industrial back in 1975 was because of the railroad. I've been dealing with the railroad on this property, and I believe in a packet, you've got a letter out there, and I'm just, I'm not going to put it on there, you all have this, that was written to me by the railroad itself. And it's from Todd Majoranstan, I can never pronounce his last name, nice gentleman. He's the general manager of the RCPNE. That's the railroad that services the majority of South Dakota. And it's in here, but I'll read it to you. It says, "Dear Commissioners, it has come to my attention that there is a rezoning request on Eglin Street that will impact the use of the RCPNE railroad and the private crossing located parallel to Eglin Street." And I think the city showed the picture of that private crossing. The RCPNE railroad is familiar with the project and have reviewed the rail system to determine if this is an acceptable location to put in a switch to access the property. It goes on to say that not every location that is adjacent to a railroad is acceptable for railroad access. Any site that require a private railroad crossing is the domain of the specific railroad and the Surface Transportation Board, not the local governmental agency. What that means is, you can't just say, "I want to put a railroad crossing here," and the city says that would be a great location for railroad crossing. It is the railroads and the Surface Transportation Board only that have the final say on whether or not you can cross the railroad tracks on any spot on their lines. The railroad goes on to say that even though a section of land is zoned heavy industrial, it does not mean it is acceptable for railroad access. The railroad then goes on to say, "We have determined that this particular site right here is an acceptable location, would have very little impact upon traffic within the city, and acceptable access it through a private crossing." They also go on to state, they also go on and say, "We cannot state at this time whether we would allow access for heavier traffic, light industrial uses through this private crossing in the future." What the railroad is saying is that this is an acceptable site to do what they wanted, what we want to do, but they're not, they're not sure they're going to allow anybody else other than a company like us to ever use this land, to have any access to it. So, that's one of the reasons that we've looked. We've gone and we've gone and looked through other areas and found out that the, the things that you need to have for heavy industrial are good access, and you have to have railroad spur. We have fought for many, many years out having railroad access to our facility. What we're looking to do on this, we're looking to move the scrap iron that we've got, a lot of the processing equipment, get it off the interstate, move it back, move it back behind the tank farms, and clean the area up. And we're going to go into an area that quite honestly has been, it's at the same area, we're just moving it farther back. It's hidden by a railroad line, it's hidden by hills, another hill, railroad tanks. It's going to do nothing but clean up the area. It's going to allow us to cut down on our truck traffic. The other thing we talked about, that I've talked about with other people, is that if we moved, supposedly would move our facility to someplace else, all of this traffic that's in and out of our facility in a short time will now have to take their loads right through the center of town, through heavy traffic. You talk about a nightmare, that would be it. I talked to, I went out and I-
Mr. Hubner, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you could try to wrap it up, we've got a lot of great information, but we have another speaker request for, actually a couple.
Okay. Well, I have a report here in the letter from the Foxden. They are right across the street from this facility. They don't have a problem with this at all. I went up and down Eglin Street. Everybody knows what we're doing out there. These are a lot of the businesses on and about Eglin Street. I think I've got 15 signatures here. They're all in favor. They think it'd be the greatest thing in the world out there to move our, move the scrap processing of our facility off of our property and farther off the view of the interstate. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commission at this point? Seeing none, I'm going to go to the next speaker request. We might call you back, though. Alan Johnson?
I'm Alan Johnson from the Johnson Bar Five branch. We have, I've lived here nearly all my life. We were granted this land or got it from the government in 1894. So, I have an interest in what goes in here, and I don't want to see this land trashed. Now, moving Ace Steel in there is about the only use for that land, because I don't think anybody wants to put a convenience store in there, housing at that level. And when you're on that land, to the west, there's a hill that blocks it from the rest of the city, and from the south, there's a big ridge. And if you stand on the ridge and walk back 10 feet, you can't see over the edge. So, when the upper part is developed, your view is up over Ace Steel down over the edge. And like Bill said, the rezoning would take it off, that land off ag tax status and put it on heavy industrial, which would be a benefit for the city. And it'll also help the area of moving his business away from the interstate. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a, one last speaker request from Sylvia Conrad.
My name is Sylvia Conrad. My father was Glenn Gere, my brother is Warner Gere. I grew up the daughter of a house mover. So, we were kind of the original Sanford and Sons in Rapid because of the beams, the trucks, the timbers that went into a legitimate business, and there were no better house movers than my family. So, I'm kind of doing an about-face, but being female, I have the privilege of changing my mind, right? Anyway, real quick, I wrote a letter. I got the letter from Renner, and the flashback of where I lived, how I lived, and the things that go with a legitimate business, which is what this one is, that can create an eyesore, kind of thought, "I don't want that next to my property." I wrote a letter stating my reasons. After I delivered the letter to City Hall, I went out and viewed the property. That is a totally unusable, unsalable piece of property. I would urge all of you to go by that, and it's almost perfect for what these people want. So, having said that, I would like to, at this time, encourage Pete, myself, the applicant, to review just how that's going to be placed, and I do not think that it would impact a housing development. That was my fear, that's why I was going to oppose it. At this point, I want to have, and another reason that I opposed it without knowing anything was because I didn't get any information. I, I didn't get any plans. Now, I hear that they didn't want to do the plans before they knew about rezoning, but I didn't have enough information to base that on, except fear. And so, that was the basis of my judgment call, which I may want to reverse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I've got John Brewer with questions or comments from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I certainly have a lot more information than I had before. I don't believe it is zoning first, plan second. We wouldn't even be having this discussion. The motion to deny would have already been done had we had, you know, no information. Now, we have more information. So, we have some discussion. Questions that I have with regard to the presentation is, what's going to happen to the existing site of Ace? And, and I don't, I'm not looking for an answer here right now, but before I would be comfortable voting, I guess this would be sort of a trade-off. I'd, I'd like to see that that is improved by the, by you leaving that site to move to this site. Buffering, I know you showed hills, but that business may need some buffering besides natural hills, and I would be very concerned about that, given some of the other businesses in this community that require buffering and containment on the site of the materials that are there. As far as the dangers on the area, I can't speak to it because I just, there wasn't any information there about dangerous materials on the site and in that location, and I did not go to the site to look at it, so I can't talk to that. Finally, just a comment that I want to make with regard to the comprehensive plan, which I think your comment was that we did that to run people out of town in the industrial business. And if you had participated in the comprehensive planning process, which was open to the community and spanned two years, I think the plan was that we made it appealing to the industrial uses in this community, notwithstanding the final language with regard to gateways. So, it's a respect for the people that are neighbors, it's a respect, it's a, it's a vision to the future of how this community's going to develop, and so blaming the comprehensive plan is something that the city wrote to limit your business. I just, I can't, I can't not bring this comment forward in the deal. With regard to the use on the site, if I was viewing it and had more information, I'd be more inclined to consider a vote other than the recommendation by staff. My consideration is not solely the gateway, at this point, the comprehensive plan gateway item. I really think that all of those recycle items that you talked about all over the community are good for this community, and that the business that you have is good, not just for this community, but for the planet. So, I need some more information. I'm not prepared to say yes, but I have a lot more information than when I came to this meeting thinking I was going to deny this application. So, I don't have a motion, those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Galen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm in support of this. I was, I wish some of this information had been articulated before we came in because it's really changed my perception of it. It sounds great. You're reducing truck traffic, you're moving your junk piles from one side to farther away from the interstate. This is great. I have the same question. What's your, what are your plans for the existing property? But, you know, besides that, that's really my only question about this. I'm really in support of this.
Thank you, Galen. Steve?
I'm echoing the sentiment of both John and Gal. You know, I, I understand the city's point, too, when you're, you want to protect your gateways. I mean, that's, we've talked about this- I mean, that's, we've talked about this for 20 years, maybe more, and what I see him coming forward to is protecting our gateway. He's saying, I'm, and that's why I want to know more about what he's going to do, because you drive by there and everybody sees, sees that, and it's a great business, and we all know that, that we need that in our community. But as you're going down I-90, is it an eyesore? Sometimes, sure it is. So if he's willing to take that, spend his money to move it back to a location that's surrounded by hills, which is something when we look for is, is what's blocking the view, I drove by there. I thought, wow, everything everybody said here is correct. There's nothing else that's going to go. You're not going to put a housing development there, you're not going to put a gas station, you're not going to put anything there. Nobody's going to want to be in that area there unless you're going to be some sort of industrial business. If he's willing to, to help the gateway and clean up that drive-through there, I'm all for it, but I'm not ready to vote today, as is John or Gal is maybe, but I'd like more information, but boy, if he can do that, that'd be fantastic for Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Kimberly?
Like everyone else has said, I'm in support of this project, but I do have one question for staff. With the use of heavy industrial, is there, what are the screening requirements? If there is any?
Depends upon the use, depends upon the adjacent zoning. So one of the things that I would like to remind all of you is that zoning it to heavy industrial opens up the barrage of all uses that are allowed. It's, you're not approving a use that's presented to you today, you would be approving any use that's identified in heavy industrial. A point of clarity, too, when Clarion and Associates were hired by the city to come forward with a new comprehensive plan for Rapid City, there were numerous neighborhood meetings, specifically along our gateways, and this is one of many gateways. The comment was made correctly that this isn't the only one, but this is the one that's visible from interstate. This is the one that gets the most traffic that's, that's seen to it, and is the first introduction of what our city is and what our city's going to look like. So when this came forward from Clarion and Associates, and was approved by this planning commission and by city council, with neighborhood meetings having taken place, and several of you sat on work sessions and were a part of these discussions, as specifically areas of where these kinds of industrial activities should be allowed, this is something that is in direct conflict of the work that was put into that plan. I just want to put that on the table so that you are aware of the impact of your actions as you go forward. I'd also like to put out there that a salvage yard is a conditional use in heavy industrial. It's not a permitted use. So if this potential developer would come forward in the future and want to do salvage on this property, it would have to come forward as a conditional use permit, and it would go before the planning commission again. If it's the intent of this planning commission to rezone this property in lieu of a conditional use, you may consider maybe putting a planned development whereby you say, if it's going to be heavy industrial, maybe not all uses are appropriate, maybe only some would be appropriate, and the planned development designation would require that, that application come before you, where you do have some of the answers to the questions that you've discussed today.
Thank you, Vicki. Andy?
Thank you, Eric. I think what I'm hearing, people going is, there's a level of support for the project, but more information is needed, and I think Vicki beat me to the punch. I think really to carry it forward, the rezone should come with, with the planned development associated with the use of the property, so that screening and other items can be reviewed to make sure we're making the appropriate decision. I think that, you know, it's not only about one, one user, I think it's a master planning, it's also a discussion about economic development, you know, pretty corridors or pre-shopping centers. And Rapid City, we need to diversify our economy for economic development and, and have more manufacturing-type jobs for, to diversify our economy, provide more stability in the long term. And one thing that you really hear from a lot of potential businesses wanting to come to Rapid City is the lack of a transload facility and proper rail use. And so that's part of a lot larger discussion than what we need to have here today, but somehow we have to really find a place to allow these types of development to happen and encourage people to want to stay in Rapid City, because in 20 years, if we move them to what we think are the outskirts today, like we did 20 years or 30 years ago, in the next 20 or 30 years, then they're going to be in the wrong spot again. So we have to collectively look at that, but, but I think my, my, my thought process is to see this taken into further development, put into a PCD, zoning, planned commercial development, all aligned, so we can approve it of the project as a whole, rather than just a rezoning use.
Thank you. Vicki, do you have another comment? I've got a planning staff late.
Mr. Chair, if we could get you to ask for a motion to extend the meeting past nine o'clock?
Oh, yeah.
I'd make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, Karen made the motion, Linda seconded to extend past nine o'clock. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
What's that?
Carrie's.
Can I make a comment to the planned development? This is, my name is Renee Katrin with Renner and Associates, and this would require a conditional use permit, which gives you the same type of restrictions as a planned development, just to tell you that.
Thank you. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, we have a lot more information now than we did previously. I don't know, Bill, if you talked to the staff about your plans as you submitted this or not, but-
Vicki has known since the very beginning. I've called her, told her what I wanted to do. I did go in with the formal presentation, because quite honestly, it cost a lot of money to go through and put all this stuff up. You know, I really, I was really surprised that they came out against it, because, you know, I've, I've talked with Vicki a lot of times, I said, this is what I want to do. I've looked at, I've looked at the heavy industrial, and no disrespect to the, all the work that went into the comprehensive plan, that heavy industrial area they've got within the city, there's nothing there. I mean, it's not owned or being used right now or floodplain. It's, quite honestly, it, there's nothing there. The only place that they have to do right now, outside of Highway 79, is to go out in the county. Well, that's you just pushing business outdoors. You know, so I, they knew I didn't, I haven't put together plans, I have a real good idea in my head what I want to do, but we're talking a lot of dirt work to level it out, to slope it back. DNR just gave us a glowing report for all of our wastewater control, you know, our, our stormwater permits. I want to make sure that I've got everything contained, I want some beautification, I want to, I want to improve it, but quite honestly, that costs a lot of money. And so I'd like to, I wanted to get the zoning done, know that I could do it, and then go out there and spend all the money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I was, I was part of the comprehensive plan when we put that together. I mean, all of us, you know, participated in that, and it would have been helpful if you would have been able to do that, so you could show us where heavy industrial can go. I know that railroads are an important part of heavy industrial because they use, you know, most everybody does use that. I'm concerned, when we did the comprehensive plan, I think part of our concern was to make sure that we didn't increase in, in heavy industrial and get it, you know, from your, your property or that you want to purchase, and then the next property and the next property. We wanted to make sure that, that the corridor was used for other things and, and try to keep that heavy industrial from creeping into the city. But there is a, a need for that, too, and I, I understand that, too. For me, it would be helpful if I knew what was going to happen with the current property that you have, from an aesthetic point of view, as far as coming into the city. It would be helpful if I knew, because I didn't go out there and look at the property. I've been out there, but I never paid that a lot of attention, I guess, to the vacant land. And it would be helpful to know where, where the, your recycling center would be situated so that I, I was fairly sure that it wouldn't have an impact on the neighbors that own the land around you. So I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I, I agree that I think this should be a planned development. I know that conditional uses are the same, but what if something happened and you changed your mind or got out of the business or got run over by a truck, sorry, or something, and, and this property's zoned heavy industrial, and, and they decided to put a, something else in there that does not require a conditional use permit? So I would prefer it to have a planned development put on that piece of property when, if we're going to rezone it. So you have to do it anyway, if you're going to use the property, one way or the other, conditional use planned developments are similar. So you'd have to do it anyway, so it's not a harm to you, but it would protect us in the future if we decide to rezone this to heavy industrial. So that's my comment.
Yeah, I knew I would have to a conditional use, and I'm fine with that. And keep in mind, not too many people really, the, the recycling facilities are usually there for a long time. It's not something that you just pick up and move. It's very difficult, so if, if we went in there, I have a feeling that we would be there for a long time, and that's really the reason we want to do this. There, it's very easy to keep the majority of the recyclables out of the view of the public. They have to know that it's there, so they know where to go, but this is the perfect site. Everything, it's, it's like looking through a slit in the door when it all, when it's all said and done. You just get a glimpse of it.
Okay. I have one further question from Vicki. If we do this, do you have to change the comprehensive plan to have this rezone?
If council concurs with the decision of the planning commission, the action of approving the rezone in and of itself changes the comprehensive plan. It doesn't take a separate action.
Okay, that was one of my questions. For me personally, I would, I would rather see this continued for a couple of weeks so we can go out and look at the site maybe and, and take a look and see in our own mind how this is going to impact us as a community. That's my request. So it seems like, it seems to me like this planning commission is supporting you, at least the comments I've heard, they're kind of leaning towards supporting you to have this rezone, but there's also some questions that we have as far as getting the recyclable materials off, off the interstate and what you're going to do with that property. So my request is to continue this for two weeks, and I'll see if that applies for a motion.
Karen made the motion to continue for two weeks for further study. John seconded.
Mr. Chair?
Planning.
Yes, so just a point of clarity. We do go way back. You and I have talked over the phone several times, and as I've told him many times, as he's called me, head for heavy industrial property and show us what you want to do. So when this application first came in, we had no idea this was you behind the proposal, just FYI. And in fact, when the generic letter came in with numerous uses, it was in noting that it wasn't heavy industrial and that it wasn't an area that was identified as light industrial. So I was a little confused that you picked this particular property. However, for the course of discussion today, we still don't know council's position on this, and I'm glad that Amanda's here today to, was she here during some of this conversation? Well, so again, if, if we put him in a position where he does come forward with a planned development and council doesn't concur, you know, that's something that would be, again, goes to his argument, should I be paying for the design until the rezone is in place? If you're going to continue this, I don't know that two weeks is going to get us anything other than if you guys just want to drive by the site. And if that's all you need to make up your mind, then I say two weeks. But if you want to direct the applicant to come forward with an initial plan at least, giving a schematic, an idea of where the general uses would be and how those movements would take place onsite and on the street and screening, et cetera, then I think that you're going to need more than two weeks, because the submittal for two weeks is this Friday, which would be tomorrow. So, just a suggestion.
Thank you, Vicki. Steve?
I, I know most of us on the dais up here, I think, got a, a request from Bill, and he was going to come out and show us the place, and when I responded to Bill, I told him that we can't visit with them, and he told me, which is pretty nice, is he could hear that from all of us. So it's nice that we're all saying the same thing. And, but he had offered to have all of us out there, said, you have to do that, but we have to give notice and everything if we're all going to meet to the public. I think I'm correct, isn't that Vicki? So I told him, but he wanted to know how the process was, and I told him he needed to contact you guys. So I think maybe that's what we should do, is maybe have that meeting out there where we can all go out and have Bill show us what he wants to do. Where we're there, we got it visually, we can see it, even, to me, that's even better in a schematic, because I'm actually there on the land, I can see what we're talking about, and, and maybe at that point, you can talk a little bit about what you want to do with your current location. So I guess I would concur with, with Karen. I'd like to move forward, and I don't know how much time we need to do all this, and I leave that to, to Vicki and Bill, I guess.
Mr. Chair, so it's rare that you would actually have a meeting onsite, and all the years I've been here, we've only done that once, and that was to appease the neighborhood, not to appease the planning commission. In the past, what's been preferred is that you each drive by on your own so that you gather your own information and not be influenced by each other or anyone else, and bring that information back to this meeting. But what you see may not be what you get. There's going to be improvements to this site, and what's there on the adjacent properties today is not necessarily what's going to be there as they develop. So hills that are there today could be easily gone tomorrow. There's a curve in Fifth Street because there was a hill, and now the hill is gone, and people wonder why Fifth Street curves before it connects to Katrin. So we see that all the time. I, I think that it would be my suggestion, Steve, that we give the applicant additional time to come in with a concept of what it is they want to do and present that to you in, in this arena versus on the site.
Thank you, Vicki. I have one question for you as well. If, just procedurally, can we connect with, can we connect a planned development with a zoning change, or is it a separate application altogether?
No, you can approve a rezoning request with a planned development designation.
Okay.
And once that's locked and loaded, then they cannot go forward until they bring forward an initial, or they can skip the initial and go straight to final.
Okay, but that then requires the multitude of engineering or, or at least planning work for the planned development, too?
Correct.
Yeah.
You can attach a planned development designation as one of your options today.
Okay, thank you. The motion on the floor is to continue for two weeks to allow the planning commission members to take a little closer look at this property. Karen?
I'm, I'm going to amend my motion to say in a month to go to planning sessions, and I don't know what that date is, we probably should have a date specific. Okay, and I can just use that as a date? Okay. Okay, then I'll amend my motion to, to read February 4th.
Oh, I thought John answered. Sorry.
Well, whoever seconded.
Okay, Linda seconded, cross that out. And Linda concurs with that. Any further discussion on the motion to continue to the first meeting in February? Vicki?
Just for the motion maker to, to clarify, so you're continuing it to the February 4th planning commission meeting to allow the applicant to bring back plans for the proposed development of the site?
Yes, that's correct, and it doesn't have to be-
Are you looking for a formal planned development application, an initial, which is just concept? There would still be some engineering conceptual information needed even in the initial. Is that what you're looking for?
That would be helpful, and my other concern is also the current property. I would like to know something about that property also, as far as if it's going to improve. I mean, right now, it's, it's zoned light industrial, but I would like to know something about that also, so.
So Bill, just so you're clear of what they're requesting, they're saying that they would continue this one month, and that you would bring forward an initial planned development, which the submittal deadline for that is, if someone could check the calendar, please? And as a part of that initial, if you're still working with Renner and Associates, then they're very familiar with the checklist that's attached to that initial.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable coming forward with a planned development, okay? I know the city likes to do that. I can come in with a projection of what I'm going to do, how, how we envision it right now, but I, I don't have near enough time to come through with a quote-unquote planned development plan, but I can certainly show you what our long-term plan is for it. That won't be a problem at all. But the formal quote-unquote planned development, I, I won't have time to do that. There's a lot that goes into that, but I can give you a 98% option of what we're going to do out there.
So the submittal deadline for an initial planned development would be tomorrow anyway, to get it- to get it back before you with notification, routing, et cetera. So, if you continue this out for one month to your February 4th meeting with instructions to Bill to come back with a concept plan to present back to the planning commission, addressing the existing improvements on the land he currently has, as well as what he's doing with the property that's under question today, is that my understanding?
That would be correct.
Yeah, I'm just going to come back with the concept of what we're going to do there, give you a better idea. I can probably get them to come up with some kind of drawings for me. I'm terrible on AutoCAD. But I will give you a very good idea of what's going to happen in that whole area out there within the next month. Will that work?
That would work. And I think also to make sure, in that concept plan, that you showed some kind of screening, what you plan to do for screening. I think that'd be important.
Yeah. We've got an idea where I, hopefully, I won't even need screening.
Okay.
Natural screening will work. But yes, I can do that fine.
And Mr. Chair, just for a point of clarification, which we will, staff will point out at our next meeting too, is that if you just blanket rezone this to heavy industrial, any use could go there at any time. If you don't apply a plan development to the property, then the assurance that it will be for the intended use as presented to you at our next meeting would not be secured. So, with that clarification, then, the initial plan development is not what's being required for the next meeting, but the concept plan. So, Bill, hopefully, that helps you know what your direction would be.
I think so.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on the motion to continue to February 4th? Seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item's continued. Number six.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is 15 PD 045, a major amendment to plan development to allow a reduction in parking, or the required amount of off-street parking at the existing Lowe's location on Haynes Avenue. The applicant, or when the original final plan development was approved of this property in 2001, there were some, the plan showed the existing parking lot constructed on top of grading and a retaining wall located along the southern end of the parking lot and the western edge of the property. The applicant, since that time, the retaining wall has begun to fail. And in order to resolve the issues of safety and concerns of the parking lot, the applicant would be required to regrade the parking lot, reduce the parking as a part of that regrading, to eliminate the retaining walls, so they no longer have the option to fail. Let me take you through some slides. Zoning the property is general commercial districts in an area, developing general commercial district, much more mall located to the south and to the east is a regional activity center. Arrow view of the property, you can see the existing parking lot. To give you an idea of what they're proposing to do, all of the western property and the southern property are located, are on top of a retaining wall. In pictures, you'll see, it's quite a large retaining wall, if you're not familiar with it. They would be regrading the property, something like that, to eliminate the need to have such a large retaining wall. But as you can see, that would reduce their parking. Future land use shows it's mixed-use commercial and an entrance corridor. Major street plan shows Mall Drive and Haynes Drive are both principal arterial streets in the city's major street plan. Here's a view of the, what they're proposing to do with the existing parking lot. So, at the arrow view, you can see the parking extends all the way to the western property line, which is actually this property line here. As you can see, the regrading kind of eliminates the need for that parking lot, restripes, repaints, puts in new landscaping islands. Look at the sign posted on the property, at the, where Pahasapa and the parking lot connect. A look down that road, the, some of the existing retaining wall. Most of this will be removed through the grading process. However, there will be some retaining wall that will be left, that's located farther up the hill, however, not to the extent it's there now. It shouldn't take or require the loads of the rest of the wall. Haynes Avenue, looking to the south, looking across the street, back up Pahasapa, the intersection, you can kind of see some of the buckling of the retaining wall there now. And a look at that retaining wall along Haynes Avenue. Further north, on the parking lot now, this would be looking into some of the areas of the parking that are going to be eliminated as a part of this request. And then a look at the parking lot now, this is taken on a Tuesday afternoon, to give you a sense of what the parking loads on the site are. Based on Lowe's experience and staff experience, since the Lowe's has relocated, or has located to this location, it does not appear that there is stress on the parking, or that they are not providing enough parking as a part of this request. So, based on the experience that staff and Lowe's have had, and what the parking demands are on the area, as well as the need to maintain safety for the community, staff is recommending that this request be approved with the, to reduce the required amount of parking with the stipulations noted in the staff report. We do have a representative here from Lowe's to answer any questions, if you have them. And staff is available for questions at this time.
Thank you. We've got a request from John Brewer. Speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And probably the representative from Lowe's might be able to address this. And if I missed it in the report, I apologize. I'm in support of the motion. I'm curious, however, about the landscape alternative to the wall, and I assume that it's a sloping grass deal. And that's perfectly good for me. But I am worried about the change in drainage, stormwater, snow runoff, that thing to traffic. I rarely travel in that area, that I don't see pedestrian traffic. So, the sidewalk and access to pedestrian traffic, and then I always worry about drainage. I don't want my car doing 360s up there in that intersection, because it's a busy intersection. So, if you could just address those, I'm good with that.
My name's Todd Butler, from Ozark Civil Engineering in Bentonville, Arkansas, representing Lowe's Home Improvement Center. Regarding the drainage, what we'll do is, the existing, can you pull the plan up, so I can kind of point, where I can use my drawing, whichever you get. Oh, okay.
Suffice, sir.
Yeah, that's fine. How do I, can we use this? Oh. Okay. Right now, the stormwater pipe runs here, and runs down.
Don't be afraid of it.
Don't be afraid of it. There you go, right there. It runs down there. So, what I've, and then there's a storm sewer pipe right now that does this, and then comes down into this inlet here. So, what the plans are right now, for the parking, I have to do it in phasing. So, I'm going to put in, all of those pipes will be removed. But before they remove the retaining wall, the storm sewer pipe, I'll connect it right up here. And I know I'm not drawing it very well, but I'm putting a separate pipe here to get that water there. And then all the parking lot water that ran out there before, I'll put another storm sewer pipe over here, will connect to here, and go into the existing facility that will run down here. And so, bypass everything before they remove the retaining wall. And then once they remove the, once we got the storm sewer pipes all moved around there, so they, that the water will be able to transfer, as it always has right now, then they'll come in there and remove all the retaining wall, and put in a slope right over here. Try this again. Right over here, a little ways, there's a 10-foot retaining wall they had to put there, just to, because of the slopes that were too much over at that point. I hope that answered your question.
And the sidewalk, pedestrian traffic will, what, just be retained as it is now?
The, the traffic, the pedestrian traffic right now comes down through here, and there's a sidewalk. All that stays in place. It runs down through here.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, unlike John, I go by that place every day, several times a day, since I live, live north there. And I spend a lot of time in Lowe's. I mean, I'm in Lowe's quite a bit. And I can tell you, I have no problem with this. I'll be in support of it. I, I'm one of those that likes to park in front of the place when you come downtown. And I've never been to Lowe's, even in the middle of summer, where I don't get really close to the front. And there's a lot of people in there, and there's plenty of parking spaces, so I really don't see a problem here. So, I will be in support of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any further questions or comments from the commission?
No, to approve.
Karen made the motion to approve. Steve seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven. Karen is going to step down from the dais for this item.
Item number seven is a major amendment to a planned unit development. We saw another one recently. This is for the Clary Building up on Catherine 16. Previously, Clary Building offices, planning commission approved them to use the building, but Black Hills Garage Door was required to leave the property. It's come to our attention recently that they never did. And we've continued to receive complaints from the neighborhood regarding the operation on this property, particularly one of the stipulations of approval, which was hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Those hours have not been kept. Based on the continued complaints we were receiving, and the nature of the use, staff's recommending that the major amendment be denied. And I guess, well, we can hear from, you know, we've received letters in opposition as well. So, if there are any questions for staff, or do we have any speaker request forms?
We do have a speaker request form from Pat Hahn.
Good morning. My name is Pat Hahn. I live at 1105 Regency Court, which is in the development that you're addressing today. I also sent you an email regarding some of my feelings about this building and this use. I've lived in the area, in, actually in the development, for 15 years. I came today because I, one of the things I forgot to put in the email was the number of times I've had to call regarding the use of that building. It would be full of heavy equipment, bobcat loaders, trailers, there'd be, I called it junk, laying out beside the building. And I, before, even before overhead door came in, I called on the Clary Building, and since overhead door came in, it was, it's worse. And I would like to see that, I think this is a planned development for a commercial office. I'd like to see it stay commercial office, and I'd like to see Clary and feet held to the fire, to keep that area clean and picked up and landscaped. We are, there's several developments in there, 119 homes. And I think we deserve to have the very best access to that area. And I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this? Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for letting me recuse myself and be on this side of the dais. I have been here before, obviously, with this particular property. And when we were last seen in October, and the planning commission approved to have the office commercial uses on this property, and they stipulated they would be there from 8:00 to 5:00. And one of the other stipulations was that Black Hills Garage Doors would be, cease to operate there and leave. Those things have not changed. I mean, there hasn't been a lot of change there. They did, Black Hills Garage Doors did stop bringing their transportation, their big transports in, with the big rigs and stuff coming through there. That has changed. That did stop. But as far as the hours of operation, they do not abide by 8:00 to 5:00. They come in at 6:30 in the morning, 5:30 in the morning. And typically, it's been about 5:30 to 6:00, something like that, every day. And when they do that, they come in with their vehicles, all the workers show up, they prepare for their day, they're staging their, their place to go to the onsite someplace. So, they come in, and they open their garage doors in the backside, which is adjacent to the residences, and take out their trucks. And sometimes they change equipment from one truck to another. They're, they're getting ready for their day. They're preparing their, to go out on the site. And that disrupts the neighborhood, the lights, the noise keeps, wakes people up. And there's, there are some people who do go to work early and get up at 5:30, but there's some people that don't get up till 6:30. And, you know, for those folks, it's a real disruption to their day. Then they, they leave, and they're supposed to be off the site at 5:00. And typically, that's not happening either. They come back from their job sites, 5:30, whatever, 6:30, and transfer things again. That, at least, is not as disruptive to people's sleep, but still, they're not abiding by the 8:00 to 5:00 hours. So, it appears to me that, this is Clary. It appears to me that the Clary operation wants to have an office site from 8:00 to 5:00, typically office site. But on the other side, they also want to have their workers show up, and get their day started, and get their trucks going. That is not an office operation anymore. That is more the industrial, commercial side of it, where they're taking other workers, and they're taking them out to the field to work on wherever they're going. That is not an office use. So, their, their requirements and their agreement to be in office is not, is not really what they're doing. So, they're kind of trying to keep what they're doing, but say they're going to be in office, but they're really not. Black Hills Garage Doors were required to leave. They're, they're not there as typically they had been, but they still have half of that building, their warehouse, they have their trucks in there. And so, they are there also, and they're, they're parked there, and use, are continuing to use that building. So, for us who live in the neighborhood, and especially for those who live nearby, who couldn't be here today because they all work, and they have, they have issues, and they had to be out of town. One had, the gentleman who came here before, Tim Christensen, he had to go to Sioux Falls today to, as part of his job. And so, he really felt bad that he couldn't be here to express his feelings, because he lives nearby and is very close to this issue. So, it appears to me that their intent is not to operate as an office use, but is intent to operate as, as a commercial industrial business. And our requirement, our request from the neighborhood is to say, no, this is an office use. It's, it's been zoned for office uses, and we would like it to go back to that, as it was originally intended, and as they stated that they would do. So, that's our request. And I'll be here to answer any questions, or have any comments if need be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? John?
Sorry, my computer is shut down for the day. The result of our action today, if we deny, as per the staff recommendation, leaves the status of this property where?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So, as Fletcher's recommendation, it is to deny the request to allow overhead doors, which is truly more of an industrial use, on the property as an office use only, and to limit the time that employees of Clary can be on the site from 7:30 in the morning to 5:00 PM at night. That would allow them to get there a little early, to get their, their vehicles or assignments, and get out to the work site. That's the recommendation that we've put before you today.
So, my question, Mr. Chair, is that, as I recall, the real violation of overhead door operations occurs in the summer, when it's light at 4:30 in the morning, and doesn't get dark until 9:30 at night. So, where's the enforcement on the existing covenants?
Mr. Chair, and as you've heard from both Pat and Karen, they've made numerous phone calls. And it just so happens that we have Jess from the Attorney's Office in the audience. And she is the attorney that does deal with the Code Enforcement Division, and she can share with you what, how she pursues that.
Marvelous.
Good morning. Again, Jess Rogers from the City Attorney's Office. I'm responsible for code enforcement in terms of criminal enforcement. We cite people when we, there have been constant violations. But generally, my procedure is when something is ongoing through the sort of regular city processes, meaning coming before the Planning Commission, we generally stay enforcement until you all make a final decision. In this case, I know you made a decision on Clery's use of this building for their business during office hours. But as staff got together and we're sort of discussing the issue of these early morning hours, it seemed to me that maybe, I know you had discussed at your last meeting that they did arrive, the employees did arrive before eight AM to get trucks. So it seemed a little unclear how strict those office hours were, the eight to five. We know that it was in the staff report that, you know, a professional office building is from eight to five. But because you'd had this previous discussion about employees coming to get their cars, I didn't feel it was clear enough for me to enforce criminally at that time, you know, them arriving at five thirty. So that was why, I think in Fletcher's current report, he wants to clarify what those hours should be for everyone going forward, regardless of what you do with the overhead doors company. So that if there are, continue to be violations, if you speak clearly today and say, these are your hours, then if there continue to be violations, then I feel like I have enough authority to enforce that criminally. The courts are, you know, just sort of sympathetic to people when we charge them and they say, hey, but, you know, I'm sort of appealing this, or I'm going through the process. I'm going before the Planning Commission. So at this point, we're sort of waiting for a final, clear word on what is allowed and what is not allowed at this property. And then going forward, I will, you know, feel free to enforce if there continue to be violations.
Thank you.
Did our previous action require that overhead door leave as a warehouse? Or both as a warehouse and an office? Both? And so was that clear in our previous action?
I do believe that was clear in your action, but again, because they then came forward to ask for this major amendment to allow them to stay again, I just didn't feel that I could take them to court while that was pending because, again, the courts are pretty sympathetic when they're going through another city process to try to get what they're asking for. So I believe it was clear. It's just, you know, the, the standard for criminal prosecution is pretty high. And I feel like a court would be sympathetic to that, so it's not really worth our time to pursue that when we're probably going to lose. You know, whereas once you make a final decision.
I understand that. Is our action today clear enough that you feel that you can prosecute on the action?
Absolutely. Yeah, I believe Fletcher's report clarifies everything, and I do feel going forward, it will be clear enough to prosecute.
Make a motion to approve by staff.
Second.
To clarify, the motion to approve would be the, the staff recommendation of denial. John? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, and, and to limit the hours of operation for Clery from seven thirty AM to five PM, where no employees are onsite outside of those times.
John made the motion. I didn't catch the second.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The hours of operation would be eight to five, Monday through Friday, eight to twelve, Saturday. They're not open on Sunday, and no employee activity on the property before seven thirty AM. So if you do approve it specific to the wording in the recommendation, I think that would give the Attorney's Office what they need to enforce.
Does that sound good to the motion maker in a second? Excellent. Any further discussion of this, Steve?
From my recollection, the, the overhead door with John, so it's pretty clear, and I'm glad we're going to take that part taken care of. But when it came to the employees, and I, I have an office too. And my office is eight to five, and in the summertime, I have them there at seven o'clock because I do got to get ready. The, the, the problem they had was the backing up and the noise of, of certain equipment. Not so much the guy for their getting ready, but if you had that beepers and the stuff going off, we told them we, we didn't want to have that in the morning. So restricted to seven thirty, in the summertime, that might be kind of difficult. I, you know, my girlfriend works at assurance. She gets there at six thirty in the morning. It's eight to five. So the people do get there and get your work started. That, I don't have a problem with people being there. Stopping in at five, in the summertime, my guys get back at five, and they're there for a little bit unloading and putting stuff away. I mean, so I understand that. The, the whole issue was noise and, and light and stuff. And if people are just coming in there, getting ready for the day, as long as they're not backing up loaders and noise going off, I, I don't have as much problem with that. The seven thirty, I don't know. Maybe it's not a problem for those guys. So I, I don't have really a problem. I'd like to see maybe an extended, you know, if, if they're done at five and they get there, they should have time to get their stuff ready and then maybe make that five thirty, so they have some time to drop everything off and get out of there. There's nobody sleeping at five or five thirty in the, in the afternoon either. I, I think the morning's the big part. If I lived over there, I'd be kind of upset too if I heard loaders backing up and lights everywhere. But if employees are just coming in there, I, I guess I'm going to be okay with the seven thirty. I'd rather it be seven, but apparently, it's, it's, it's a bigger issue than that. But I'd like to extend maybe the closing hours to eight to five and be, you know, off the property by five thirty. Gives them a little time to leave.
Thank you, Steve. John?
I, I, I could live with whatever time it is, but if you say five thirty, that means they get there at five thirty and leave at six. So as long as they're quiet, I don't think the neighborhood's going to be calling every day. But I thought that what we were saying is the use of this building is office. So people come there and they beat on their computer and they mail out accounts payable and that kind of stuff. What I am hearing is that unless we get the warehouse and, and the, the work use out of that building, that we're going to continue to have problems. So for me, and the motion in the second is, that there aren't people warehousing, showing up with industrial, light industrial or anything else that looks like work that isn't office work. I, I, am I missing something here? Notwithstanding what Steve said, I understand your business plan a little bit in there. I don't think people showing up at seven in the morning to go in and, and run their computer is something somebody's going to call about. Somebody backing out a bobcat and dinging and all of that stuff. So I think the ordinance ought to be clear for prosecutorial action that it's an office building and that people conduct office work there, which means there's a bunch of cold storage that is wasted space, or they convert it to offices. But I stand on the, on the motion as presented and hope that the people next door understand a quiet arrival at seven thirty or seven in the morning and that respect for leaving after five o'clock is not something that we're going to sit out there with a stopwatch. People need to learn to get together a little bit, and this one, clearly, the Clery folks have not played well in the neighborhood. So that would be my comment.
Thank you, John. Jan?
I'd just like to say, I remember when we considered this the last time, and it doesn't appear that what we determined to be the solving of the issue has been followed. I, I, I'm not, I don't think we need anything but office in there. I, unless, unless there's something I'm not hearing or seeing, it's just they ignored us. So that's all I care about.
Thanks, Jan. Yes. Vicky?
So one of the complaints that the neighborhood had is that there was trailers that were coming in, semis unloading materials, forklifts in the morning, loading materials out onto trailers, et cetera. And so Patrick, who's here in the audience today, it doesn't appear he filled out a speaker request card. I'm sure he wanted to speak to this item. But he indicated that all of the equipment, the material, and that would be removed from the site. What they are using the site for, though, is a place where the staff gets together in the morning. Maybe they're parking their private vehicles and getting in a company vehicle. Some of those company trucks are loud. Garage doors are opening, lights are on. That's typically something that's not associated with an office use. That was discussed at the last meeting, that if they got rid of the materials and the equipment, that if they just showed up early to get their assignments and pick up their work trucks, that might be appropriate. But they were showing up at five thirty or around that time. And so noting that someone, let's say, they didn't pick up their work truck there. Some young worker might drive up in a diesel truck of his own and wake the neighborhood up. Our compromise was, is to make sure that there be no storage of materials or construction equipment on the site at any time and that this be for an office use only, where staff could come in, pick up their work assignments and their company vehicles, not be on the property before seven thirty AM. And, and then as the stipulation states, that time would vary whether it's weekends or weekdays, and off the site by five o'clock, Monday through Friday. So that would be our recommendation still. I hope that kind of explains what happened and where we're at right now. If you want something different, then I think Jess needs you to clarify that so she can enforce it.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor and a second for that stipulation, as you just stated. Patrick, do you have a comment you'd like to make?
Yes. My name is Patrick Anderson. I'm the branch manager of Clery here in Rapid City, and I'm representing Tom Clery on this matter as well. I, I guess I wasn't aware today that this meeting, I was going to be addressing anything that had to do with Clery's usage of the property. So I'm not as prepared for that. Since we're on that topic, our, our last meeting, I, I had presented a revised usage plan that did state that, that we would be, that there would be activity onsite outside of those eight to five hours. Those eight to five hours are our business hours. But there, there is activity onsite. That activity is vehicles parking and leaving. There's no, there is no loading or unloading of materials onsite. There are no more materials onsite to load or unload. All of our equipment is, is taken directly from site to site and is no longer stored at the property. And there's been, there's been a drastic change in the usage of that property since the last meeting. But as, as far as, as far as the usage in the morning, basically, it consists of, currently, there are four vehicles that park in the parking lot and two that leave. And one garage door opens two times, and that's it. And it's, you know, the guys, they open the door, drive the truck out, close it immediately. They leave the parking lot with the lights off. They turn off their headlights when they come into the parking lot to, to cause the least amount of disturbance possible. But as, as far as any other machinery, equipment onsite, that's, that's all been eliminated since the last meeting. And I guess, maybe I misunderstood, but I understood, according to the plan that I had submitted prior to the last meeting, the revised business, or the revised operational plan is that we would be starting prior to those hours and, and prior to that seven thirty time, our standard start time is six thirty AM. And that's when, that's when employees park their vehicles and leave in a different vehicle. And that's, that's the, that's the nature of the activity prior to those business hours.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Vicky?
And I concur with Patrick. We did discuss that at the last meeting. And in fact, it was disclosed at that meeting from those that had concerns from the neighborhood that that may be an issue. And Patrick had offered up at the last meeting that he could just have his staff meet onsite if that's what needed to be. They wouldn't come to the, to the building at all before eight AM. And so then the concurrence was, is that, you know, if all they were doing was getting company vehicles and not loading and unloading. And again, I just, I defer back to those that are in the audience today that are speaking to what, how that operation, as it's being conducted today, impacts them. And again, it goes to the Planning Commission to decide if you're going to restrict it to the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you. John?
Just a quick question. Could you, what's the status with overhead door? Are they still onsite?
Yes. Overhead door is still onsite. I've had conversations with Vicky and Jess at the City Attorney's Office. And since we had planned to, to make this request, to have them stay, then we, they've, they've moved their inventory offsite, but they're still occupying the office space.
And today, our action is for them to vacate that space, even as office? Do you have any comment to that?
I guess I was under the impression that, that since this application, since we were submitting this application, then we could just wait on that issue. And I, I think I have a letter here saying, this is from the City Attorney. And it was my understanding that if the application was submitted, the city will stay enforcement pending the review of the application. And so if, I, I mean, I had no intentions of blatantly ignoring requests to have Black Hills Garage Doors vacate. It was simply.
No, I understand, but you understand the action today is for them to vacate.
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay.
Yep, I understand.
That was my only question.
Okay.
Thank you.
John, Karen, it looks like you have something to say.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify the, the hours. And I know, John, you mentioned, or somebody mentioned something about summertime hours and, and how they'd be there during the daylight hours. But currently, especially from the neighbors that are really adjacent to this property, they have told me that they come about between five thirty and six o'clock in the morning. And although they are, are coming to get their requests, you know, places to go, their job site, those kinds of things, those garage doors that are in the back that they open up, they open up a partway, and then they'll open up the hallway, take their trucks out of there. They have changed one truck to another, and maybe there's some equipment on one truck they want to put on the other truck. And, and at times, they've had, like she said, like there was chains or something dropping into their trucks and, and their lights are on. When they get done and then they pull their trucks around, sometimes they do turn off their lights and, and pull around to the front. But by that time, the neighbors are already awake. And they have, they don't have the, the back hose and those kinds of things. They, they did remove those. I, I agree with that. And, and it's, it's like they're trying to, to appeal to everybody, but they're still trying to do their same things that they're doing. They're still trying to get their work lined up for the day. And, and if they work at, at six thirty in the morning and that's their hours, and they show up at five thirty to get their trucks to go out to the job site, they, maybe they should have their trucks out of the job site or something. I mean, right now, it, it's, it's the disruption, especially for the neighbors in the, in the lights and the noise of just getting those trucks out of the, out of the garage and, and doing that. I mean, they should, I, I think the neighbors would be comfortable if they came at seven thirty in the morning, even if they wanted to get the trucks out. I think it's, it's time when people are awake, but at five thirty in the morning is not, not acceptable. And I know if they want to stay later than five, I mean, come back and bring their trucks in after five, you know, five thirty would be acceptable also, but seven o'clock at night, sometimes it gets a little, you know, testy. But at least there's nobody sleeping then. So I just wanted to add those comments.
Thanks, Karen. Andy?
I think there was a lot of good comment from everybody on the dais about different positions between Steve and Jan and, and John as well. You know, I'm running out of time, and I feel like playing enforcement officer is a waste of my time. We made a decision, whether or not we all agreed with it or not, we made the decision. You know, bottom line is, I don't know if this is a, the, you know, what I'd suggest to Clery is, obviously, the neighbors don't want you there, so I'd find a new place to be. And I'm going to call the question and make the motion to approve per the staff recommendation.
Okay, we have the motion on the floor, and he's called the question. I think we'll proceed to voting. All those in favor of denying to allow Black Hills Garage Doors as a professional office and reaffirm or affirm the operating hours as stated by staff, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is it too late for me to speak up?
Unfortunately, yes. We didn't have a speaker request form.
I tried to come over and fill one out. I didn't have a pen.
Oh, okay.
Pat didn't have one either, and he was able to talk, so.
He was requested by the commission. Unfortunately, we, we weren't aware who you were, that you were connected to the item. I apologize for that.
Mr. Chair, so the motion's been made. You, you could listen to the gentleman and then make a motion to reconsider an item if you needed to, or again, you can just proceed with adjourning the meeting.
Well, please state your position quickly and.
My name is Michael Friend. I'm owner of Black Hills Garage Doors, the business in question. I'm owner of Black Hills Garage Doors, the business in question. I signed a lease with Tom Clery about two years ago and started paying them a lease. In that timeframe, what occurred was evidently there was complaints about things parked outside, so Pat came to us and asked us to clean it up and get things moved out of there, which we did. We cleaned it up, moved everything out. Evidently, there were still issues, and then some time went by and Pat did approach us again that day, we can't have any equipment in the shop or anything like that. So I rented storage units and I moved all my product into storage units. In that meantime, I purchased commercials on Kelloland promoting that location to the cost of about $8,000. That is a lot of my motivation for not losing that office building. I have one secretary there with a little showroom, I have one, one work truck in the back of that building, and our office hours are from eight to five. My secretary leaves at 3:00 every day for her kids. I have a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old that I, I'm a single parent, and I get them to school every morning at 8:00. So I'm not there, there's no days that I'm there before 7:30. It's usually after 8:00 before I get there. Laura gets there at 8:05. We're within the hour constraints. There's never any time our vehicles are started before 7:30 in the morning.
Okay. Thank you. Vicky?
Mr. Chair, as I'm sure Andre has let you know, there's a 10 o'clock meeting in this room, please note that unfortunately, bringing that use to that building required that they come in and get a building permit in order to take what was supposed to be storage and bring in an additional office use. They failed to do that. We would have had that conversation before they got so involved or financially committed to the site. At this point, I think with the motion as it stands today, they have the option of appealing your decision to city council or vacating the site, but at the, the final action being that they have to cease and desist from the site. At this point, their option would be they could take this to city council.
I think that's the avenue left. Unfortunately, I don't see any interest from the commission to reopen this item, and I think we need to move along from this meeting as well. So thank you for your comments.
There again, it saddens me that, that, well, I guess I'm done here.
I don't think there are any other discussion items or staff items?
No.
So the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Andy made the motion, Linda seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Or adjourned?[1785.11]